Thanks for your patience, folks. We'll be ready to go in a minute here. Soon as you get a green light. All right. Very good. Here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Dyna City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. It is 7:03 PM. And I think Director Bennerott has indicated that we're doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion. People are watching on cable TV. edynamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook. We're going to let those folks participate in the conversation this evening in community comment and in the public hearing portion of the agenda. So the number that they can call, you can, you should get this number up on the screen because community comment comes up fairly quickly and you'll be able to speak to anything that's not on the agenda this evening. If it's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, you won't be able to comment on it other than that. With those two restrictions, you'll be able to comment on things as you call in or as you come up to address a council on a matter of concern to you if you're in the audience. So having provided that information, I'm going to now call the meeting to order and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Haplin?
Here. We just had a meeting upstairs. That was the reason for a bit of my delay. The work session evolved around item 8C, which is our legislative agenda. And I know we've had a lot of emails from folks in the community about something that was on the state legislative platform for discussion purposes in our city council meeting. I think that I'm going to turn to Manager Neil because what we're going to do is entertain a motion to have 8C removed from the agenda for this evening, and we're going to deal with that at a subsequent date.
Do we want to see the [inaudible]?
Yeah, we could do that. All right, let's do the pledge.
[inaudible] [inaudible]
Thank you, folks, and thank you, Member Jackson, for that little reminder on the pledge. So we've got this meeting agenda in front of us, and I'm going to turn to Manager Neil. This matter was originally, as I said, 8C, now potentially ready for discussion. It was originally on the consent agenda, and I think he'll discuss why it ended up on the consent agenda. And some folks in our community were very concerned about some of the items on the state legislative platform that was on the consent agenda. And so in our work session this evening, we decided we were going to, we worked through every segment of our legislative platform, both statewide and federally. And so we're now going to discuss, I think briefly, what the course of action is going to be for the state legislative platform and the items that we determined we would remove from the legislative platform, and then come back to me. And I'm going to also have Member Pierce address a little bit about process and how we're going to go forward on those items that were on the legislative platform that we're going to remove from the legislative platform. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number, item C, the 2024 state legislative platform, as you noted, was initially on our consent agenda for tonight's meeting. It should not have been on the consent agenda. That decision is a temporary decision that staff makes about where something starts. It doesn't, it's not officially approved, of course, unless the council takes an action when you approve the meeting agenda. But it shouldn't have been on our consent agenda. It was more of a clerical area, a clerical error than anything else. But we did pull it back out on effective Saturday, I believe, it started to be shown on the regular agenda for tonight. At the work session tonight, at the work session earlier today, we did receive some good feedback from council on some of the items that you wanted to see in the legislative platform, some modifications, some amendments, and a couple of strikeouts. And a couple of those strikeouts were the notable items that I think you were referencing. Number 2.4, authorizing the city to impose a demolition fee, and item 2.5, authorizing the city to impose a single-family transfer tax. Those two items council asked to be removed from the agenda altogether. We'll make the other modifications that the council proposed. We'll get this out on Better Together Edina, and we have got it tentatively calendared for January 16th for council action that evening. We may be able to take a look at this again for a second look on January 2nd. I think that's what we're going to shoot for in terms of getting this ready, ready for review.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Manager Neil. So the items that Manager Neil was alluding to, 2.4 and 2.5, which were part of a grouping under the category affordable housing, dealt with the potential authorization for the city to be able to impose a demolition fee. That was 2.4. And then 2.5, which caused a lot of folks to write in to the city council members and also call, was something that would have authorized, was legislation, seeking legislation to authorize the city to impose a single-family transfer tax. So the notion was, that came out of a small group of folks working on an affordable housing task force, that one possible idea on how to secure funding for future affordable housing projects was to impose a single-family transfer tax when you sold your house. And of course, because we're a creature of the state, you have to go to the state legislature for permission to do something like that. So I think folks were thinking, well, should we go to the state and ask for that authority and then have a conversation with our community? Or should we just get this off the agenda for now and then start that conversation? And I'm going to turn to Member Pierce, who's been part of that small working group, working on some of these housing issues, to talk a little bit about, after we take these items off the agenda, how are we going to go about talking about them, both with respect to the work we do as a city council and as a housing redevelopment authority for the city of Edina? And also, how do our residents have input on something that we've only talked about, really, one time in a work session? So the whole thing was premature, way premature. It was way too early to be talking about this. I think the collective wisdom of the council upstairs was, you know, too early to go to the legislature on something like this. Let's talk amongst ourselves. Let's talk to our community first to see if they think this is a good idea or not. So I'm going to turn now to Member Pierce, who's going to talk a little bit about where we go from here on discussing this issue of, in a broader sense, how do we work on some of these affordable housing issues and the extent of the challenge ahead of us, and how we go about talking about these two items that we removed from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From their regular agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll start just framing for everyone who's present and who's watching or who may watch. The reason we did, we started this stakeholder group. And so we looked at a couple of things. And across the nation, every city is focusing on affordable housing, right? How can we provide more affordable housing for our residents? And there were two, because actually, there were three data points we looked at that were surprising. And so, one, the current median home value in Edina is about $660,000. And so we did a projection on that, and over the next seven years, that median home value is projected to be a little over $1 million. And so we had done that work. We had the county assessor do their own analysis and confirm that it's actually a little bit more than $1 million in just about seven years. And then when you look at the income, median income in Edina, it's not keeping up with that median home value. So that was one thing we looked at. The second thing we looked at is our housing stock. And over a 10-year period, Edina has lost a little over 1,000 homes that would be naturally occurring affordable housing. And so when you look at those two pieces of data, we started to think, all right, if, what can we do as a city to accelerate being able to keep housing affordable in the city of Edina with such an escalation in market value? And this was, we also looked at rental, but the numbers that I'm sharing are actually home ownership, not rental. And so we, back in September, I believe it was, we said, hey, let's set aside some funding to work with a consultant. Let's get a group together to dive in and look at ways that we could make a dent on that. And so that group worked, I don't know how often we met, but a lot. We did research, all the communities, we looked at data, and we came out with that research with somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 13 different things that people are doing. But the impetus was, can we create a sustainable fund that's big enough so that we can then move to the uses and have more of those provide more naturally occurring affordable housing or preserve those homes that we do have that are in that price range? And then we had a working session to share some of the outcomes from that. And out of that working session, it became clear to us that it was so complicated, and there was so much data, that there is no way we could get through all of the uses and sources adequately enough to even put a position together to move forward. And so coming out of that working session, we continued to meet and decided that from a process standpoint, what we would do is schedule another working session, which we're targeting to do in January, I think the 11th of January, where we can directionally share what we think from our findings, the top five or six initiatives that we think might do two things. One, allow us to generate sources that are sustainable funding to go after this issue, as well as a couple of new uses that we think that we could also fund. And so the idea then, we thought what we'd do is in that working session, we would go through that with the council and just simply ask for the council to say, yep, directionally, we understand in principle what each of these represent, and we should go forward to the next step, which is then to do a deeper dive. So we would take each one of those uses and then work with a team to then build everything out to the specificity that will be required, to then come back to council with each one, rather than trying to do them all at one time, so that we could have the conversation. And then following that process, we'd also be able to then use a public process, whether we're doing a public hearing or what have you. We would ensure that we have feedback or provide an avenue for feedback from residents on each one of those, rather than trying to do this huge package. And so that's the process that we're off on. And I think, Mayor, you said this, what happened is two of those sources actually would require legislative approval to even pursue. And so they ended up in the consent agenda, not the consent agenda, in the legislative priority list that we talked about, and that was out of sequence. The intent would have been to go through the process I described, and then anything that we thought should go forward could then become a legislative priority. But we kind of, we got that out of sequence. So that's the process that we'll continue to go through.
Thank you.
Yep.
For that. Member Pierce, so having provided that information, any other council members wish to inquire or comment before we entertain a motion to table item 8C to, I think we can probably safely say to our January 2nd meeting, 2024, for further conversation? All right.
Yep.
Member Agnew.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would also just reflect on this as being an opportunity for us as a council and as a city to really play an active role in building trust and providing people of our community with information. Because a lot of the concerns we heard were people connecting the idea of us imposing a tax without holding any public conversation about it. And that was never what was up for debate. And I think that it's on us, right? Like, this is confusing. It's on all of us to be more clear with that upfront, because, you know, I think we've heard from every realtor in the city, and we've heard from a lot of people, and that's because people feel passionate about this, and it gives them probably some type of angst and anxiety. And I don't want to be the ones causing that when it's unfounded. So just want to really call the action for all of us to be more crisp about that moving forward.
That was a, I thought, thank you for making that comment about trust, because that's what we're trying to build constantly, is a strong level of trust between all of us that live in our town, that serve our town, and the people in our town, and that they know they can trust the people that they've elected to the city council. So we'll continue to work on that. And I think we just need to keep that in the back of our minds, and try to make sure that we're as clear in our communications as possible so that there's no room for distrust or mistrust, that things are clearly articulated so people can understand exactly what's intended. And I think it was real muddled in this situation, and people were understandably upset. So, Member Jackson, did you have a comment? Or did you want to move the matter? Or both?
Just briefly, I will move the matter, but I also want to say that thank you for raising the issue of trust. It's, you know, we are all here. We're not going to do anything without a lot of public input. We're not going to make any major changes without tremendous amount of input. And I just, we all feel that very strongly, and we want to, we want to be able to earn your trust, and we want you to trust us, and we want to be able to trust you and your reactions to us. So this was a surprise. I see somebody shaking their head at me. This was not my initiative. I was surprised as the public. We need to work together to build trust, and we're not going to go forward with anything without tremendous amount of public input, and we're not going to go against the will of the people. This just, that's not what we're here for. So I will move the removal of item 8C from the agenda.
And move it to the, table it to the January 2nd, 2024 meeting?
Yes.
Of the city council. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Agnew seconds. Member Jackson's motion to table 8C.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, and does that, does the motion include the excising those two items from the agenda to, or from the packet?
Yeah, I thought we had taken care of that in the work session, but if you want us to be more articulate about it, we can do that.
I think so.
Yeah. Would you amend your motion to include that excision of those? It's items 2.4 and 2.5 from the state legislative agenda?
So I move to table the state legislative agenda to the January 2nd meeting, and the version that we get will have 2.4 and 2.5 removed.
All right. Very good. Second?
My second state.
You're comfortable with a second on that? Revised motion? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. All right, let's go back now to the first part of the agenda. And we have approved the meeting agenda in its amended form, moving 8C to our January 2nd meeting. And now we are at community comment. And so if you want to speak to the council about a matter of concern to you that wasn't on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, feel free to come forward, and we'll be glad to hear about your concerns or comments. All right, I'm not seeing anybody coming forward. I'm going to turn to Director Bennerott and see if we have anybody online who wishes to speak to the council about a matter that wasn't on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing.
I do have a caller, but my caller is not indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, I need you to press the star 1 keys on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number 1. That will get you in the queue to speak. If you use the pound or the hashtag symbol, that actually takes you out of the queue. So it's the star symbol, then the number 1. And there we have it. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Go ahead, caller.
Hello, everybody. My name is Daniel Eaton. Hi, everybody. My name is Daniel Eaton at 5712 Parkwood Lane. First and foremost, want to thank everybody for the acknowledgement of the issue that was just talked about with the half a percent real estate transfer tax. Really, really appreciate the council and just what everyone said about that issue and garnering, again, a level of civic discourse and trust about that. So thank you. I wanted to talk about 5780 Lincoln Drive, and I just wanted to make sure that the council knows that we're really looking forward to, the neighborhood, Parkwood Knowles, really looking forward to continuing to engage in this small area plan that was put forth a couple of months ago. And even though, Solheim, I've gotten more funding from the Met Council, we just want to make sure, and I want to make sure, that, again, as we continue to build trust and as we continue to make sure that we're holding our officials accountable to things that were said and things that were agreed to, I just want to make sure that we're still going to move forward with the process of community engagement that that small area plan allows and entails. And so, again, I've been working hard to assure my neighbors that even though there's been funding, that it's been granted by the Met Council, that I believe that this council is going to do the right thing and make sure that we move ahead with the small area plan, get the community engagement, and ensure that we hold our developers accountable to conform to the zoning code as it is for their sites, and that people do not get special treatment when it comes to what they can and cannot put on those. Again, everybody should be treated fairly and equally, including developers. So again, I just wanted to make it very, very clear to this council that I'm really looking forward to continuing this trust relationship in this building as we go into this small area plan. And the constituents that I represent in my neighborhood, I want to make sure that they know as well that I've got that trust in my town. So thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Eaton.
I have no other callers.
Okay. Our practice is that our city manager responds to community comments that were made in the prior city council meeting, and I'm going to turn to Manager Neil now to see if he has any comments he needs to respond to from our last city council meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do. We had two community comments at our December 5th council meeting, December 5th council meeting. First was Ron Anderson, and Mr. Anderson talked about his concerns about some criminal activities that were taking place at that time, and wondered about the feasibility of using the soon-to-be-old fire station number 2 that's on York Avenue as a possible police substation. I can tell you that we do have some initial plans to conduct a reuse study of that building and that land. The first thing that we'll look at is, is there some other municipal government service or program or department that could use that for the good of the community? So we are talking about that. We've got, we've got some time here between, we've probably got a good year and a half or almost two years between now and when that, when our new fire station's going to be open. So we will be taking that on, but that's the first priority, to see if there's some governmental function that we can use it for, and then if we don't, to look at how it could be put back into the community. So that's number one. Second comment was from Andy Brown, and Andy had some questions about why do we offer duplicate services around assessing that we could possibly get from the county? He thought that was a good idea. There wasn't really any question there, and also, of course, he had some suggestions around Edina liquor, and could we use that money, could we use our liquor profits more effectively in police than we already use them for in our recreation enterprises? Also, a couple of weeks ago, we had an HRA meeting, and we did have some questions. We frequently don't have questions at HRA, but we had them on that day. And we canceled our HRA meeting in December. And so Lori Groats, who was the person who made those comments, asked me if I could answer them tonight at this council meeting, so I will. She had three questions. One, about 7,27250 graffiti removal. We do have the authority to cause graffiti to be removed if we can't get the property owner to do it. There are some notice periods and things like that, but we can do that and will do that, and we have done that before.
Boy, it has been done.
Yeah, it has been done.
Yeah. I got a photo of the property, and the graffiti's been removed.
And I think that Mr. Carlson caused that.
Yeah, Mr. Carlson did it.
Yes, he did.
On his own. Developer did it.
Question number two was, what is the nature of the access that the city has from West 77th Street back to the Fred Park? We have an access, we have a public access easement agreement with Scott Tankenoff and his group. It gives us all the rights that we need to operate a public street. It's not, it's not exactly the same as a street right-of-way, but it gives us all the rights that we need, and that has been negotiated, and both parties have approved that some time ago. She also had a number of questions about the parking ramps at Pentagon Village. Who owns the parking ramps was question number one. Those are owned by Pentagon Village LLC, the organization that owns those properties and is the developer of record. There are some questions that she raised about can the folks who live at the Eddy park in those parking ramps? Are they able to do that? And the answer is yes. The TIF agreement and the parking easement allow residents at the Eddy to park in the open-air garage and to be charged a fee to park there. Any fee that is collected goes to the owners of the apartment building. Finally, there was a question about who gets the money, and the owners of that parking ramp get the money. There was also a question about when Walzer was parking new cars in this ramp, was there any money exchanged? Are they obliged to tell us if there was? We don't know if there was money exchanged, and they are not obliged to tell us if there was money that was exchanged as part of that. And that's all I got.
All right. That prompt any questions or follow-up comments from council members? One thing, a couple of things for me with respect to the repurposing of the fire station next to the Southdale Y. I think it would be fair, important to make an observation from you or any of us about this new substation that's going into Southdale. You might want to comment on that.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have a new substation that is part of, that is, was negotiated between the city and Simon Properties, who runs Southdale Center. So that's something we've, we had there for a number of years. It went away for about the last eight years, I believe, and now it's coming back. And so Chief Milburn has been integral to negotiating that and keeping that relationship positive with the owners of the mall. But because we have a substation there, another substation a few blocks away may not be, may not be the greatest use for that property. It may be necessary if we don't have a good relationship with Simon Properties. So we will be looking at that subject with all of that in mind.
So historically, we had a facility in Southdale, but it was kind of on the basement, the substation there. Now we're going to have a very visible location right across from the service centers.
I think that's the way they want it.
Yeah, and they're going to build it out and pay for it.
Yep.
And help us pay for the staffing of it. So that's a good thing. Member Rissler has, that's caused Member Rissler to make an observation or ask a question.
If memory serves, I believe Mr. Brown was making the comment about the city assessor, is that right? And saying the county provides that service, and it was in the context of the budget and wondering whether we could save money by eliminating that role, and if indeed, we could just rely on the county assessor, and noted that other cities do that. So I just wanted to put that in context.
Yep. So you might follow up and comment on why we have our own assessing department?
Well, we have our own assessing department here and have for many years, because our residents have, whenever we've talked about that particular issue, we get a lot of feedback from residents that, especially residents that have moved here from Minneapolis or from other cities, that prefer to have the kind of access to tax assessors that they have here as opposed to other communities. I would note that even cities that do have that relationship- I would note that even cities that do have that relationship with the county, the county doesn't do that for free. So, it's not just eliminating an entire department budget that saves that much money. There's a relationship that the city has to negotiate with the county. It's not at all clear whether they're taking new customers right now either. They have their own staffing issues at the moment.
All right. And then, one other issue that you brought up, it was Ms. Groats brought this up, it was about the easement access to the Fred. We call it the Fred Richards, old Fred Richards Golf Course. It'll be a new park soon. I think she brought that up in the context of, we had an applicant, Seven Hills Academy, that wanted to put a school into one of the buildings out there, and it posed some challenges around ingress and egress to and from the park. But my understanding is from talking to one of the folks that was involved in that development team, that they've withdrawn their application. So, that's a non-issue, at least relative to Seven Hills Academy. Can you verify that for us?
That's correct. They never made a formal application, and they were due to pay for the traffic and parking study that typically is associated with that, and they never did that. And we have not heard from them since. It's our understanding that they're looking at a site in Burnsville.
Yep. Yeah, so I heard from one of the people on that team that they weren't going to pursue it further. So, okay. And I think we were all wondering about that, so that was news that was appreciated, I guess, just so we understood what their intentions were. All right. That causes us then to move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda under Section 6 of the agenda in one single motion?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting all the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All those items are approved that are on the consent agenda. And now, we are on to special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and we have, I think, a really interesting presentation and someone that we can be really proud of for doing something that I haven't seen happen before. And this will be very interesting to talk about, and I think that residents in our community will be really interested in hearing the tale of this emergency management director, practitioner, certificate presentation. So, I'm going to turn now to Chief Slama, our fire chief, who is going to talk a little bit about what this person did. Identify the person, and we're going to, you know, vet them a little bit, celebrate them in this accomplishment. So, Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us tonight. Thanks for introducing this. It is a, it's a great opportunity to recognize someone who's put in a lot of work. Andrew LaVenture is our communications unit leader for the Edina Fire Department. He's well-known around the city. He's helped out as a pool director for the Aquatics Center during a time of need. We question what Andrew can't do for the city. He's a resident of Edina. He was a paid-on-call firefighter for us and now works part-time as a community, or a COM-L is what he's referred to as our communication unit leader. And Andrew's recently promoted to captain as a Delta pilot as well. So, when I say he can do everything, he can. He's a huge asset to Edina. So, with us tonight is John Dotter from Minnesota Homeland Security, and I'll introduce John and have him talk a little bit about the presentation for the emergency management practitioner that Andrew received recently.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Mr. Dotter, welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. We appreciate you coming over.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invite. My name is John Dotter. I'm from Homeland Security Emergency Management, and I'm here on behalf of Director Kristi Rollwagon. And tonight, I'll be presenting Andrew LaVenture with his certificate, the director's practitioner certificate. Individuals who partake in this certificate program between the basic program and the director's program are required to take over 400 hours of combined online and in-person training specifically focused around emergency response and emergency management practices, and these are directly taken from FEMA and presidential directives that guide emergency management across the nation. So, for all of his hard work, it's my pleasure to present him with the director's practitioner certificate, again, on behalf of Director Kristi Rollwagon.
Comments, please.
I love the comments. Well, Chief Slama, Mr. Dotter, thank you so much for presenting. Mayor Holman, city council members, thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize me this evening. I wasn't going to say how many hours, but 400 hours sure seems like a lot, and it was, both in-person and virtual training. Very happy to do it. I'm a lifelong learner, as the chief may have alluded to, and I enjoy this. And so, I'm very much looking forward to taking what I've learned and putting it into practice and helping out the community so we can live safely and work and visit for everyone who comes into our city. So, thank you so much for recognizing me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Good. We're going to do a photo.
Yep. Make sure you take this.
Thank you.
That was the only item we had on that portion of the agenda this evening, so we'll move on now from special recognitions and presentations into reports and recommendations. And the first matter there is item 8A, which is a Resolution 2023-100, which accepts donations to the city of Edina, and we need a supermajority to do this by state law. And so, these come to us, it seems like every couple of weeks, we've got folks in our community and organizations donating something to senior center, fire department, police department, and we have that again this evening. So, is there someone in the council who cares to move the adoption of Resolution 2023-100?
So moved. Second.
Member Agden moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of 2023-100. It is a resolution accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-100, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution 2023-100 is adopted. For this reporting period, we have some gifts to the senior center, in-kind donations, cash donations. Robert Fulgency, a nice gift for general use purposes, an anonymous gift. These will all be posted on the website. For the fire department, there was a $200 donation from Troy P. and Susan A. Pereira, much appreciated. And then, in the police department, many of you in our community know Pacey Irk. For those that don't know Elaine Pacey Irk, if you are a golfer, you have seen that new clock out at Braemar. She donated the money for that clock, and now she has donated $12,000 for Edina to be able to get a new canine service dog. And then, she's also donated another $1,000 for something called Shop with a Cop. And I'm not sure what that is, but maybe the chief will tell us. And then, Cargill also donated the $1,000 for Shop with a Cop. And so, those are the, those are the gifts embodied in that Resolution 2023-100 we talked about. So, let's find out what Shop with a Cop is and find out a little bit about the new canine.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, Shop with a Cop is a new program that we started about two years ago, and it allows our officers to take some kids out to Target here in Edina with these donated funds and do some shopping for the kids' parents. And so, it's just a great opportunity for our kids, for our officers to engage our kids in this different way, and it's just a great program that's really taken off nicely for us. We're going to do it tomorrow night, our next version of Shop with a Cop, and so we're excited for that. And then, our new canine has been purchased and training has begun, and we have an officer selected for that. And so, we anticipate releasing more information about that new dog and that new officer in about six weeks.
All right. Very good. Okay. So, let's move on with that, this portion of the agenda, and the next matter is Resolution 2023-86. Director Teague has this matter, our community development director, and this is a proposal that we heard a few weeks ago. It would involve a potential comprehensive plan amendment, a potential zoning ordinance amendment, and a potential site plan review for 6016 Vernon Avenue. It is the so-called proposed Green Drop location, and I noticed the applicant is here this evening as well, or representatives of the applicant, and I'm going to turn now to Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the remodeling of the old Keys Automotive for a donation collection center for Green Drop. There are two options included in your packet, one for approval, one for denial. As we talked about last, the last time we discussed this, this council has complete discretion whether to say yes or no to this project. The same options were considered by the planning commission. So, the request is for a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-density residential to neighborhood service, and the second is a zoning ordinance amendment that would allow a donation collection center as a permitted use in the existing zoning classification of this site, which is PCD-4. As we talked about last time, that does impact several other sites within the city that have that same PCD-4 zoning designation. The planning commission recommendation was a unanimous vote of six to zero for denial of all three requests. That would be embodied in the denial resolution that includes the comprehensive plan, site plan, and ordinance amendment. If the council is inclined to approve the project, there are two resolutions for approval. The comprehensive plan amendment has been separated from the site plan, and the ordinance amendment would be first reading. If you have any changes or edits that you would like, we could discuss those this evening. As mentioned, Mr. Ron Dee is here to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the Green Drop, but with that, we'll turn it over to the council for your discussion.
All right. Thank you for that. Council members, we heard a presentation on this a few weeks ago. It held the public hearing open for an extra week to get additional information, and I'm sure many of you have received correspondence on this, both in favor and opposing it and interested in your thoughts. And who might want to start out the conversation? Member Risher.
I am concerned about the comprehensive plan amendment, and I don't understand why it's necessary, particularly when this was presented to planning and to us, there was the idea that this could be a use that happened for maybe five years, and then it could go to residential. And my understanding is this new zone, neighborhood service, would only be applied to this particular site. It would not be applied to any of the other sites that are zoned the same, PCD-4, I believe that's what it is. So, why would we be creating a new zone for just one little scrap of land, and is that not spot zoning?
Well, it's Zone PCD-4, which is very different from the surrounding area. So, the zoning is not changing. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for medium-density residential use. The Met Council requires that the zoning of property needs to be consistent with the land use designation in the comprehensive plan. So, those two don't match, so we need to reconcile that. In regard to the other, it's 10 or 11 sites that are Zone PCD-4, those are located within zones in the comprehensive plan that allow commercial use, so there's no comp plan amendment that is needed for those other sites. This would be a commercial use that would carry through.
But why invent an entirely new zone, and particularly because we have other commercial zoning we have, you know, that has, we have put purely residential in commercial zones. I guess this just seems as if it's overly cumbersome, and to just do it for one.
Yeah, as the council recalls, about a year ago, when the restaurant was proposed on the site, we looked at re-designating the site for neighborhood node. That's our smallest commercial designation in the city, so that would be the other existing land use category in the comprehensive plan. Since that was denied with that request, the thought being that we create this new district, which was taken somewhat from the Cahill District Plan, there were some new districts introduced within that study, this is just taking it to a much smaller scale. It only allows those automotive uses and this donation collection center. So, it's a very narrow focus, very small commercial site, which the site is very small at 16,000 square feet.
If it was, if that was done, then would it be possible for residential development to happen at a later time, say, five years past, and that seems to be the idea?
It would have to be another amendment to the comprehensive plan. That was part of the concern that the planning commission had was the solution here for this perceived temporary use is a permanent one. We're amending the comprehensive plan and amending our zoning ordinance, so that was a concern that they had.
Other questions, or how much at this point in time? Yes, Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback off of this question from Member Risher, so I think Commissioner Smith, to me, framed this issue right. I guess I would say right. That's subjective, I suppose. And so, he asked two questions. One was, do we do nothing while we either do the work to create the neighborhood node or put a permanent solution in place? Do we do nothing while that work is going on? Or do we do something in interim that gets the site cleaned up, puts it to use, right, gets a new fence, right, so those renovations that would go in place? And then, we do the work during that timeframe, and then at the end of that lease, now we've got it, we've got a permanent solution in place, and then we can move forward from there. And so, if I remember, Commissioner Smith and Chair Bennett had similar lines of questioning on that. And so, for me, that really is the, for me, that's the question, and I'm not quite sure how to address that. So, one of my questions is, if we went with, I understand it's a five-year lease, but if we went with, let's do that, and then go do the work to make a permanent solution in the comprehensive plan, how long would that take?
So, we have to update our comprehensive plan every 10 years. We're scheduled to do that, it needs to be done in 2018, or 2028. We would typically start that process in 2026. Usually takes two to three years to complete that. So, if you went forward with this amendment this evening, we could tee that up as part of the next look at the comprehensive plan. As you know, the planning commission work plan is pretty lengthy with their small area plans and ordinance work that they're going to be doing. So, that would be the next step within that 2026 to 2028 timeframe. We could look at it specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? To this issue that you just raised about some, I called some kind of interim use potentiality, you know, in thinking about that lease, you mentioned it was a five-year lease, and I think I got some information on it. I didn't see the actual lease or proposed form of lease, but as I recall, there were some unilateral rights of renewal for at least one or two other periods. And then, there would be nothing that would preclude the owner of the building from saying, yeah, I'd like to have you just stay here, and so it could be there forever. You know, that's the issue. Do you want to do something that you think is an interim solution, and it ends up being a permanent situation? And so, that's given me pause to think about, well, really, it's guided median-density residential, residential all around it, you know, should we be thinking more along those lines anyway? Member Risher, you had, that caused you to offer up something.
Yeah, and I just want to say there was the comparison with the Burley Lot, and when we talked- we talk about how we are moving forward with development, we look at the range of units per acre, and we tend to say, oh, you get to do the highest, and we don't necessarily consider the impact on community, and, you know, just thinking about how the step back along Valveau was reduced from 25 feet to 10 feet, and the implications for safety with that, and then looking at this and the narrative, saying, oh, we can get four units on this lot, and Eden Prairie Avenue doesn't even go all the way across the northern border. So really, I think this proposed use makes a lot of sense. I also know from residents that the site is not being kept up, and I think it would be really good to have a drop-off place for people to bring things, so we keep things out of the landfill. There's a lot of things that make a lot of sense with this, and so I'm really comfortable with the project, the site plan, and the ordinance amendment. It was just thinking about the comprehensive plan that was kind of holding me back a little bit.
Thank you. Member Jackson.
Yes, this prompts a question with me for our city manager. If the site's not kept up, what, at what point do we have, can we ask to have it cleaned up?
Well, Councilmember Jackson, members of council, do you, can I clarify, do you mean after the new proposed use is there? Is that what you're asking?
If it's a Green Drop.
Right.
Well, if nothing happens, if we deny tonight, the neighbors are saying there's some trash there, that it's got weeds and stuff, so if we deny tonight, what powers do we have as a city to ask them to clean it up?
Oh, we have the powers of kind of abating a nuisance, right? That's what we would say. So if it's tall grass, or if it's garbage, or something like that, we have staff that go out, assess it, assess the situation, they find out who the property owner is, they send a notice to the property owner to abate the nuisance, to take care of the issue. If they don't, then we take care of it, we track our costs, and then we bring them back to the council once a year to certify to their property taxes if they haven't, if they have not paid, if they haven't paid us for the work that we did.
Thank you.
Member Pierce.
Just a follow-up question on the lease, and just in general, are there things that we can do to protect our ability to convert that site to something else after the end of the lease, after that five-year period?
Yeah, I meant look to the city attorney, once that use is there, they would have the right to continue it if we amend our ordinances and amend the comprehensive plan.
Mayor, council, yeah, that's correct. If this is zoned this way in the zoning ordinance, then they could potentially continue this lease, and the use can continue for as long as it's zoned that way. If the council changed the zoning at a future time, then the existing use would become a lawful non-conforming use, but it could continue for as long as they wanted it to until they ceased that lawful non-conforming use. I mean, about the only option you could consider, I guess, which is not currently before you right now, would be to consider making it an interim use and issuing an interim use permit, but that's not the zoning ordinance amendment that's before you tonight.
Member Agnew.
I just want to ask one more clarifying question, and this is partially based off of what Member Rissler was asking at the beginning, but my understanding is that we are adding a allowable use to PCD4, which would also allow that use at all of the other sites. And so if we were to proceed with that, and I won't name any names, but if there were one of the facilities at the intersection of, let's say, France and 54th, that wanted to change or add this type of drop-off, would we have any ability to prevent that?
If they met all of the conditions that are listed in the ordinance that's before you, you would not. If they were removing a building and rebuilding, you would have site plan review, but if they conformed with all of our setback standards, those hours of operation, everything that's in the ordinance, we could not say no to that.
Thank you. I think my general thoughts on that, if there, are there other questions?
Actually, I had one last question. So I want to reverse, if we vote no and conform the comprehensive plan, the zoning to match what the comprehensive plan says today, or at some time in the near future, in 2028, can we revert it back to commercial? Because I think there were some concerns about, well, do we want to preserve this as a commercial space? But the planning commission could say, hey, we really like having a commercial space there, and we could do that in the comprehensive plan.
You could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In the comprehensive plan, but not in the zoning code?
So if the zoning remains Plan Commercial District 4, and it's re-guided, I guess you would have the ability to either re-zone or re-guide in either circumstance as part of that abate of the comprehensive plan.
By re-zoning it, don't you risk having a condemnation, essentially? I mean, somebody's established a business practice there using a donation collection center, and now you change the zoning to something that doesn't include a donation collection center? Because you like the idea of the long run being a commercial? Isn't that a taking in some form?
They could continue to operate that same use until the use changed, so we couldn't force them out. They would be allowed to operate as long as it continues and doesn't discontinue for longer than a year.
Mayor, that's correct, Mayor. So the council could change the zoning subsequently, and the existing use would become a lawful non-conforming use, and could continue for as long as they wanted to until they ceased, and then the new zoning would apply if they wanted to start a new use.
Okay. Member Agnew, you were going to share some thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In all, I like the idea of having a Green Drop within our community. I think we focus a lot on reuse, and this is a really great way to do that. I like this particular project, though, in a different area of the city. I think that this site in particular is not the ideal site for it, and if it weren't to, you know, move forward tonight, would really like to see exploration in other parts of our city for something like this. But with that site in particular, and I know when we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago, we did speak a bit about traffic, and there were a lot of discussions around expected throughput and what that would look like, and of course, that was, you know, my anecdotal experience comes on the heels of me going to the Hennepin County Recycling Center twice in the last two months, and my wait there has been 15 to 20 minutes, and they have a pretty efficient process, and I'm talking the one like down in Bloomington to be specific. And so I just think it's, for something like this that I expect would be utilized, and I hope would be utilized within our community, I think it's a tight site. And then I think even beyond that, I am hesitant to make such global changes, both for this site in particular, given that we've heard from a lot of community members, both, earlier this year when we were looking at the Keys Cafe, as well as in this time now of, you know, neighbors wanting residential, and some neighbors wanting something that's a little bit more of a community draw, like a cafe. And I'm not saying that we need to have that conversation now, but this isn't that use. And making this change, making this change to the zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan, is a permanent change that affects not only this site, but sites across the city of Edina. And so it's because of those implications that I would not support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rissler has expressed her thoughts. Member Jackson?
Well, I think everybody has said my thoughts. I listened to the planning commission a couple of times, and I thought their analysis was really, really good, and I thought they framed this up in a good way. I am, I share a member Agnew's concerns about the backing up of traffic, that Vernon is a very, very busy street, there isn't really room for cars to back up, and I've been to donation centers where it's a long wait. It's like sometimes a year, it's really fast, and sometimes it's not. And I strongly support having, supporting the reuse economy, and I really would love to see this as an opportunity, but the backing up of traffic, the permanency potentially of this use, when the neighborhood very clearly wants this to be housing, I think we can have a discussion about where commercial can go in our city when we have the comprehensive plan conversation, but I've gotten such strong support for housing, because it's not just this site, there's also an empty site next door, which at some point could be a larger project to get rid of some of those variance concerns. And so I guess I'm going to fall along the lines of the planning commission where they're like, well, back and forth and back and forth, but ultimately, I thought they did a very good job with the analysis, and I'm going to be voting no.
Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, when the original project came forward for the restaurant, I think that was one of the meetings where we had two lines of people for and against, and so I think just like many things in our community, you know, things are 60, 40, 50, 50, 70, 30, 30, 70, somewhere in there, which makes sense when you have this number of people looking at a project, right? So it's rare, I think, that we end up with what I might call like a supermajority on some idea. It happens, but I think it's rare. And so my, where I was thinking in terms of supporting this is just, you know, I've teed up the other two points. I think residents have talked about having residential, which we know that, that will be tight to do that, we've all, but we can do it. We've also talked about having a restaurant. I think when we talked about it, we had said like, oh, well, maybe a small deli, not a big restaurant, but something small, you could walk to, you and I could meet there. And so that's kind of where we were thinking. But here's my challenge. If we don't do this, how long will that site sit without anything there? And I just, as a city, we don't have a great track record of that, and so I am in support of doing something there, and I think Green Drop is an awesome opportunity. They're reusing the building, and so there's a lot of reuse there, it's not a tear-down and a rebuild, and so lots of aspects to it that I like. But I would be thinking of this as an interim solution, because it is clear that this is more either residential, some type of neighborhood node is what people want long-term. And so for me, I think taking the, and I'll coin it this way, taking the risk that we do our work within the next five years or so, we frame that the way we would like it to be into perpetuity, with community feedback, with community involvement, we get that permanent solution in place, and then we move forward from there, as opposed to having it sit during that work. And so that's why I thought this was a good use of the site, and would be in support of doing it.
Thank you for that. Thinking about the traffic issues that a couple of you have raised, I think about where I go now, if I'm taking goods somewhere, gently-used goods to, let's say, Ark and Richfield, or you're going to Ark down in Bloomington, or even the Hennepin County Recycle Center, they're set up in a way where you're either going down an alley, or if there's backup traffic, it's into a massive parking area. You're not worried about having people back up on Vernon Avenue. While that's influencing, it's not the main decision point for me. I, you know, I appreciated meeting with the representatives from Green Drop. I thought they did, you know, a good job, Mr. D. in particular, back here again this evening, of expressing their position on things, and I loved their association with the DAV. But I like that triangular piece of property guided the way it is, as medium-density residential. I think that's its future, and I don't want to risk an interim use becoming a permanent use. And I also don't like the notion of amending the PCD4 code to create something called Donation Collection Center that then is a possibility in 10 other locations in our town, without us having anything that we can say about it if they otherwise meet the requirements of the ordinance. And to me, that's, you know, you could see someone saying, yeah, we'd like a little more business coming through here, and so let's put a donation center here, and in the back of the, you know, in the back of a facility that's owned by a national organization, let's say it's a service station operator, for example. So when I think about the way the planning commission, again, analyzed it, the risks in the PCD4 amendment to create that other category of donation collection center, the sort of broad implications that would have, and unlike Member Rissler, we go round and round on this, the two of us, I like what's happened over at Burley's. I think it's greatly improved the neighborhood, and you get these oddball pieces of property, like Kevin Key's, and I can see townhouses there, too, and I think it would fit right in the neighborhood. You know, would I like to see maybe a coffee shop there? Yeah, whether a coffee shop could make it or not, or they'd analyze it and say, well, no way we can make it here. I don't know about that, but to me, a donation collection center would be way, way down the list of my preferences for our town at that location, so I'm opposed to it, so I'm not going to vote for it. And so I think we've got, yes, Member Rissler?
Just one clarifying question. Are there any zones in the city of Edina where you can have a donation collection center?
Any what?
Do any of our zones, our zoning allow for a donation collection center?
Yeah, I don't believe they're listed specifically, but likely in our PCD2 and 3. I could explore those with Mr. D.
So let me ask this, and amongst those that are in favor of adopting Resolution 2023-86, denying the comprehensive plan amendment, ordinance amendment, and site plan, based on the findings in the resolutions, do one of you care to make that motion? One seconded?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I thought we were separating them.
This is for a negative vote. We don't have to do that. We can handle them all in one. This is a motion against. This is a motion to approve Resolution 2023-86, which would deny the comprehensive plan amendment, deny the ordinance, deny the site plan based on the findings of the resolutions. And Member Jackson's moved, Member Agnew has seconded it, and we're going to now have any further discussion you want to have, or we'll do a voice vote? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution as Number 2023-86, denying the comprehensive plan amendment, denying the ordinance amendment, and denying the site plan based on the findings in the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The Resolution 2023-86 is adopted three to two. All right. Thank you. Now we're on to the Item D., which is the Roslyn Park Pedestrian Bridge Project Update, and then we're going to talk a little bit about some roadway reconstruction projects.
Members of council, I'm here tonight to provide an update on the Roslin Park Pedestrian Bridge project that we've discussed recently. So at the November 21 city council meeting, I was in front of you providing an update at that time. The council gave some feedback. They wanted more community feedback, both to the neighborhood, get some more comments. We wanted some more information about life cycle costs and then some image examples of what this bridge could possibly look at. So we did that. Our team did that. We created a Better Together website. We collected 25 online comments. And then last Thursday night, I hosted a community meeting and we had three of the members there. The mayor and members Jackson and Pierce were there to hear the comments directly from the neighbors, which I thought is great when your availability allows that to hear it versus trying to have staff summarize back to you. So appreciate you attending that meeting, had some great discussions. The photo there in the bottom right is the current bridge and our current snow removal operations, which is none. So it's got stairs and we don't remove any snow and it's been hit twice in the last couple of years. So we provided a matrix on the website. I won't go through all those, but I did the other night. But that matrix reviewed 11 possible options and a do nothing option. There's kind of two options that were, were, want to take forward, but I just want to give an update. So option 1A is the switchbacks. You can see these green lines on the, on the image show where the bridge stays in the same location and the switchbacks go back and forth. They're each about 70 yards long and I'll show you some examples, but that's what's needed to be 5% or less slope to be ADA compliant. And the ramps are similar on both the north side and south side. And then recall that MINDOT is looking to add the third westbound lane permanent with a noise wall. So this was that graphic I provided earlier, just showing that that noise wall can go underneath the bridge or behind the bridge. We have some options yet, but first we need to figure out what's going to happen with ramps in the bridge. So the other option that we learned about our, a little bit more support to further on more analysis by staff that we heard on Thursday night was option 5B. And this is long ramps. And this would actually move the bridge west 450 to 500 feet, whatever we need to be ADA compliant and get high enough over the highway to not get hit again with some normal loading. And those blue lines again are a potential noise wall location. We could screen the ramps. We would have an opening. Just wanted to throw some lines on there just to show that those noise walls would still be potentially in that location. So, and then the sixth, the other option that we still get comments from residents is elevators. I don't think it's a good idea. I'm not going to recommend elevators, but that's for council to decide and instruct me going forward when I come forward early in '24 with a, a formal recommendation on an option. And I'll explain why I don't think elevators are a good idea in this context. Here again with some images I showed last time of what that noise wall could look like under a bridge on the left and with an opening on the right. This is located just north of us on Highway 100, just south of Excelsior Boulevard, if you're interested. Now I want to give some images of some possible bridges that have been done in the state that we could look like, right? We're proposing a steel truss bridge because we can span all of Highway 62. We can get rid of that peer support in the center median and we can span the frontage road on the south side of the road on Roslin Park 62. So we can do long spans, much longer with steel truss. So this is a bridge in Marshall over Highway 23. You can see here that MINDOT, this is a MINDOT roadway. They allowed a little more stuff on the bridge with the name of the city and some decorative steel on the top and it was painted. This is one in St. Bonnie on Highway 7, Dakota Rail Trail over the, over the highway. Again, steel truss, extra length to span that highway. And then you can see those ADA compliant ramps on each the left and the right-hand side. And then people are asking, well, what's the scale of these ramps, these ADA ramps? This is in Golden Valley. You can clearly see this was constructed probably in the eighties, just by the age of the fence and kind of condition. No aesthetic treatments, but it gives you that scale of what, how the size of these ramps would be going up and down. I don't think this one's ADA compliant, just looking at the slopes, but I'm not for sure. And then we found a really good example, a recent example in Columbia Heights. So again, you're spanning the highway with that steel truss bridge. And then on the left-hand side, there is the switchback ramp idea that was 1A. And you can see here they've painted the bridge. They've added some concrete colored items to the supports. You can see the different colored concrete on the supports, all those aesthetic items. They have lights and various things. So this one really kind of ties it all together of what we could possibly see there. I wanted to make sure people know how we're going to remove snow. So this is the size of our equipment. We do blowers, we do plows and we do sweepers. We can change that front end piece on this equipment. It weighs 8,000 pounds, so we need to basically support that. And we need a wide thing to make the turns on any ramps or any kind of access points. We've done that before on bridges. It's common, they go up the helixes here on Highway 100 South, but this is what staff would prefer to do snow removal with. We can drive right up and over. We can do the Wooddale path up and over the bridge and continue through Roslin Park. So getting into some of those cost scenarios, so the cost construction, just construction differences. And what I'm comparing here is the ADA ramps, whether they're switchbacks or a long ramp, really not same cost, to the elevators that the residents have been asking for. When you do an elevator, you're building a building. You have to meet the building code. You have building code requirements. You have water management. You have heating, cooling, HVAC systems. It's like what's going on here in City Hall right now, electricity, lighting. I'm not even including security and safety kind of features that may be wanted. So the available funding is up to $6 million. The cost for the bridge with ramps is five to six million and the cost for the bridge with elevators is five to six million. So the initial construction costs are very similar. Long-term maintenance is where the big difference is and some of the other access issues that I'm concerned. So long-term maintenance on an elevator, we're estimating it's eight times more expensive. And then how do you remove snow? We've had some comments about putting a roof on it. You're still going to have snow and ice management because there's drifting with all the fencing on the side of the bridge. The only way to not have snow removal is building a skyway like you see entering the hospital over France Avenue, which is much more expensive and definitely not really in the budget. So now the other side of the equation, initial construction costs are similar, but the maintenance and operations, and I'm comparing the ADA ramps with the elevators. So a bridge structure, you need to paint it once in a while. You need to just patch and seal the deck, but it's pretty minimal maintenance on a bridge structure, about $2,500 per year. And we're hoping to get 100 years out of this facility. So that's $250,000 in today's dollars over 100 years. Elevators, much different story. Annual inspections are required because it's part of the building code. We got HVAC issues or maintenance. We got electricity, cables and replacement. Those cables only last for so many years. So if you're trying to get 100 years, you're going to replace the cables. You're going to replace other mechanicals, the heating and cooling systems. So we're estimating at $20,000 per year or approximately $2 million over that same 100-year timeframe for maintenance. So eight times the cost to maintain elevators. And when you do close the elevator, there is no ADA access. And there's one I visited in Portland. It was closed. I talked to them and it's been closed for weeks. So now we have long-term potentially where there is no ADA access during maintenance or other things. We've talked to some of our Metro Transit partners and agencies in the metro. They're seeing restrooms used for a lot of activities we don't want because they're heated and cooled. So restrooms, there, people are using them for that. They're sleeping in them. There's drug use and et cetera. We don't want to lock it down because we want that access 24 hours a day. We have people going the second shift, third shifts. They might be commuting on bikes and we want them to roll up and over this bridge facility to access their work or whatever they're doing. And again, there's a big question with snow removal with an elevator. We did collect 25 comments. I mentioned that. This is just a summary. The raw comments are in your packet. I won't go into those any further. But next steps. So like I mentioned, I learned last week that there's another option kind of on the table. So what I took away from that meeting next week is, or last week, is not ask for a recommendation or approval of an option here tonight with the council. But what I'm going to do is discuss the alignment and aesthetic options with MINDOT. Can we do the long ramp? Just to see if it's possible with the noise wall and the lane and what are the aesthetic options because it does span over MINDOT. So they do have some requirements and restrictions on what we can do. And just discuss impacts with our Parks Department on Roslin Park side with either of the options. I'll continue to update the Better Together website so the residents are aware of what's going on. And we'll complete some renderings of 1A and 5B. So then we can really see with real world imagery what a new bridge and ramps would look like in that context with the noise wall, right? I think it's important because one, that noise wall can screen a lot of this facility. And then I've heard from people on 64th Street and Miller's Lane who really haven't participated in this discussion because they thought 1A was the option we were going forward with. They're pretty upset about the long ramp option, which is opposite of some of the other neighbors I've been talking to. So it's this balance and different of opinions between the neighbors. So I'm reaching out to those neighbors just to get them up to speed on where we're at and then continue to update the website and engage with all the residents in the neighborhood moving forward. So I wanted to provide that update tonight. I wanted to get some feedback from the members that were at that meeting last week and happy to answer any questions kind of where we're at today.
I'm going to start with members that weren't at the meeting, weren't able to be there. Not all of us can always get those scheduled accommodations, but for Member Agnew or Member Rissler, any questions that, or comments? Member Rissler?
The one concern I have with, it's bikes and pedestrians together. And I know that switchback is supposed to be tight so that the bikes slow down. And I'm just wondering, is there another, are we going to be having markings on the pavement so that bikes are on one side and pedestrians on the other? Or is it just going to kind of be open?
Yeah. Great comments, Member Rissler. We're proposing this to be 10 feet wide, so I'll just remind the council of that. We want our equipment to make that turn in this example or make the turn in this example, right? That corner might be rounded. This one, you're going to have probably higher speeds, but down at the end, we're making that 90 degrees. The really, one of the concerns we heard was slowing down before they cross that road. They don't want bikes flying out in the 64th Street. By doing a 90-degree turn on the bottom with either option, it'll help slow those bikes down. The interaction with bikes and pets, you see this very common on the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail. They have bridges up and over 162. People got to be courteous with each other. We don't intend to stripe separate uses because 10 feet is really, you know, which direction are you going? How do we stripe multiple lanes for each type of use? So we don't intend to stripe it separately to answer your question.
Okay. Thanks, Member Rissler. Member Agnew?
Thank you. So I, I appreciate that you're going to be coming back with more renderings. I think that will really help, especially in this visual that you have up here. My concern, and I, I was able to walk the site, is on this side where we see the switchback, there's a lot of older trees compared to where we see the other visual. There's not really much in, in terms of tree growth. So I would like to also understand what would be the impact to the trees with the intention of maintaining trees where we can.
Yeah, I can generally answer some of those. I've met with the city forester. In this scenario, I've shared this with the neighbors too, between the noise wall and the new bridge and the switchbacks, the trees are gone. They're gone in this, this alignment. We've had the city forester remove them. There is one good-sized oak tree. Otherwise, the remaining trees would be nice to have, but they're not substantial, like oak trees that we really want to protect or need to. In this other case, the whole fence line has volunteer trees that have come up. They're two to three inches. I've heard that the people on Miller's Lane like that screening, but I think the screening thing goes away with the 20-foot noise wall. So there's that trade-off there, but we can definitely look at. And then the trees on the south side, in this case, those are ash trees in the park on the very left-hand side of this graphic where the bridge would be moved. And then we have those five or six pine trees there that, you know, we don't want to, but we would have to take them in that case versus some of the old growth oaks in the park that are further east that we're really trying to stay away from because there's a whole grove of oaks there. So we can definitely give some more information on the trees when we come back.
So comments from folks that were there, or Member Pierce, your observations, and you may have questions that you've thought of since we got the presentation last Thursday, I think it was.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought the, just in general, I thought it went well. I appreciated being able to be there and, and engage with the, the neighbors about the project. So I thought that was really done nicely. And so I had maybe two questions. One, you talked about the elevator and you gave some reasons why you're not supporting that. I think the email I saw that was a example of a pedestrian bridge with an elevator. And I'm going to, you'll know the right term. I was going to say it this way, you can correct me. I thought that was what I would kind of consider an outdoor, kind of an elevator, not a structured one like the ones that are on 35W for Metro Transit. Is that, am I right or am I, am I off in that? And then I got a follow-up question.
So I don't know where that elevator was, if it was the state of Minnesota or not, but it's still a building. It still has, you know, if it was in the south, they might not have the same HVAC systems, but Minnesota building code is going to require it. I think when you see that one, I just noticed there wasn't a lot of aesthetics. It looked pretty plain and basic compared to what you see at some of the 35W transit stations where there's elevators. So I think there's the same component, same mechanicals, same cables. It just comes down to aesthetics and heating and cooling. I'm not for sure on that. That's shown.
Okay. So that was the question or point I was going to make if, I thought the two might have been different in that one was in a climate that wasn't very cold. And so you don't have to have all the heating and the HVAC versus here. And the reason I mention that is because I think the structure would be bigger here than what I saw in the email. And so I think it would be, I was just going to validate that, but it looks like you're not recommending that. But it would have been good to understand the differences between those two. So that's one. And then the other one is just a request. So there's a, a famous quote that says, "Great policy is found in the margin." And what it's referencing is that when we focus on those that are in the margin, so marginalized people who maybe don't have the same capabilities as others, we typically have better policy. And so I just thought about in this case, have we asked, and I'm not sure how you would do this, but have we asked people, our residents, who might need to use, who might need or require that ADA capability, which of these options would be better for them? And so I get what we're doing in principle is we typically hear from the neighbors that are impacted, and that could be for various reasons, property, sightlines or what have you, and those are all valid. But it did strike me to ask the question, we talk about ADA capabilities a lot, and I just wonder, in the next cycle of getting feedback, I think it could be powerful to ask if, and again, I'm not sure how we do that because people would kind of have to declare, if you will. But that would be, that would be meaningful to me to hear from someone to say, hey, for us or for me as someone in a, whether a wheelchair or something like that, option one is easier because of XYZ. That would just be good feedback to have. So.
So I can give one example. I had an individual call that is in a mobile electric wheelchair about this project, heard the various options. And this individual said they're concerned with the elevator and the safety and not having access all year long because they've seen other elevators go out of service, even in your buildings, and then they're stuck. So that one person did call and provide some feedback, not on the Better Together page, but personally called me and, and gave me those notes about the concerns with the elevator and Mike's just having, knows there's going to be access. If they take the route and they get there, they want to know they can get over at all times and not get there, and then they can't and they have to go back and, you know, it's a waste of time for that. So that was one example, and we will see if there's any way we can collect more to your point.
No, I would appreciate that if, if we could see if there are other ways that we can get more opinions on that. That'd be great.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two completely different questions. One is about the massing. If you could go to that Columbia Heights, I think was the last pretty bridge that you showed. Yeah, so there, the ramp does not seem to be super masked. It doesn't look like just a sea of concrete because the other ones were trails that were continuous and didn't have the ramp. Now if you add a sound wall to that, is it more compressed or would it look a lot like that with just depending on which side the sound wall would go?
It would look just like this because we're coming down and we're going to switch back right there if we're doing the switchback option. So then it's, do we want to screen residents? What do the residents want to look at? That's what I keep asking myself. Do they want to look at a noise wall or do they want to look at the ramps? I have heard comments, they don't want people looking in their windows from multiple people all over this area. So I feel like the current thinking that I'm hearing is put the noise wall so people can't look down into our homes.
Yeah.
wall so people can't look down into our homes. So then the users of the trail would be on the highway side.
And with the, because the other picture of the sound wall was the old bridge with the big, heavy concrete and kind of rusty-looking and everything. So the massing here looks to be like it's a little bit lighter because I think we had a discussion about some of the aesthetics and how beautiful this bridge could be. And so if it's a continuous path, it would look lighter because you wouldn't have the two layers of ramp, which then leads to my second question is, is there any way to measure the safety for the switchback versus one continuous ramp? Because I am concerned about the speed that could be picked up with it. There was a comment about, well, it's going to be, why does it have to be so long anyways? And the ADA requirement requires that 5% or less slope. So it's going to be long, whether it's long and folded up or long, and it's going to be a long walk. But is there a measurement about which one is actually safer for slower-moving people or vehicles? Or I'm thinking little kids or people with dogs and little kids with a lot on their mind, is that going to be safe? Is there a difference?
Yes. This one, you have to stop halfway. So you're basically not, you're not coming to a stop, but you're coming to a much slower speed at that point versus I just think of these middle, I coach mountain bikes, that long ramp with a middle schooler, they're going to see how fast they can go by the time they get to the bottom. So and you have nothing to deter that speed halfway like you would in this example. So it's, you know, I had 14 criteria on the matrix. There's probably another 10, but we're trying to balance all those things and come to the best answer to meet all those needs. So.
So yeah, I err on the side of safety.
Okay, thank you.
So for me, you heard me talk about this the other night. I know we need to be concerned about function. And I'm well-accepting of that and the requirements related to ADA, that all makes sense. But I'm also concerned about form. So those two combinations of function and form are really important to me. And you had an earlier slide where you showed, well, this would be the cost over 100 years. I view this as a 100-year project. And I just think we ought to, we ought to make sure we do it right. So I want to know how much time we have, first of all, because when we were talking the other night, and I'm looking on my phone at the most beautiful pedestrian bridges in the world, somebody's got an article on it, I think it was Architectural Digest. And there's beautiful bridges in Calgary, and there's beautiful bridges in the Netherlands, and even right down in Chicago, there's a great bridge that we could look at that was done by Frank Gehry. So for me, I know we got a budget, but that's money in the bank. And if we're thinking about 100-year project and we got $6 million in the bank, if we could develop the kind of form that goes and matches up with the function, and we spent another million or $2 to get the form that we want, to me, that would be worth at least a consideration. I'm not saying that, you know, I want to do something that's over the top from an expense standpoint. But for me, I want to look closely at some of these other things that have been done around the world and think about it as our once-in-a-century opportunity to really do something special here. Because particularly, you know, for our town as a signature sort of piece that people are going to see as they go on the crosstown, but also for the neighborhood, I feel like this is kind of a, at least to the north, you know, the park is kind of a, we can figure that side out. It's the other side that's important. This is kind of a golden moment in time, and it is, we have these confluence of things happening. We're going to have their street three done. We're going to get a new pedestrian bridge that works really, should work great with our neighborhood. And they're going to have a sound wall theoretically, at least that's what we're hearing from MINDOT, that insulates them from car noise and viewing cars and increases their property values. So it's, there's some real opportunity here. I just don't want to settle for the okay, not great if we can, if we can otherwise make it work from a budgetary standpoint. So I want to explore, I want to drill down on that a little bit more. And that's going to take a little bit of time. So how much, how much time we got?
We need this built by 2027. Those are the funds are dedicated. I'm trying to get it done in 2025 for construction, just because I get people calling and they struggle with it. So we're.
So we'd have all, we'd have all, in your opinion, we'd have all next year to kind of work on form and function?
Yep. I think the key for MINDOT is the layout and where it's, where is it going for them with their budget? If we figure that out, then the aesthetics were open on, I think on the ramps more so, over the highway. They got some pretty strict things. You've seen some examples, you know, you brought up the cable bridge over Highway 55 there on South Minneapolis as an example. So they do have some things that are outside the box, but MINDOT's pretty rigid with aesthetics. But that's what I want to find out. How much will they let us do something and make this? Because I think this is a gateway to Edina and Roslin Park. How do we bring those two things together? I think then we just got to think about what's going to be contained in that noise wall. What do you, you know, residents aren't going to see much if that noise wall is screening the whole ramp on the north side. So then it's really highway users and park users, and what are they going to see? And make sure that we do the aesthetics where people are on the park and on the highway to make it look appropriate there. So.
So for me, this one in Columbia Heights looked pretty good. And the one in Marshall looked a little better to me, but for what they are. But I keep thinking about, well, what could it be?
Sure. And that was always kind of my thinking. Let's get the alignment and get know where it goes. And then we'll come back with aesthetics and engagement plan with the public and see what, what we can do from an art standpoint with the bridge and the ramps here. So.
Okay. Member Pierce, has this, has caused him to come up with some?
Good thoughts? No, I don't know if these are good thoughts or not, but, but it's a good question. So one of the neighbors I talked to was, they were concerned about us making a decision on a bridge and then not really knowing if it's going to fit, what would happen, right? If, when the wall goes in. And so we are doing renderings, but I thought if you could, and I think you started to do this, if you could just talk through the design process that is the engineering design process of, you know, you, you talk about that so people get a sense of, of the whole process of approvals along the way.
Yeah, thank you, member Pierce. So when we did the matrix, we tried to bring forward options from a tabletop engineering judgment side that we, we're at 90%. We know this is going to fit. And now with the noise wall, we also looked at it from just a tabletop exercise, knowing our consultants have done bridges all over the metro, state, national. So we're comfortable that this is going to fit. And now we're working with MINDOT on exact, how much room do they want from the guardrail? How much room do they need between the bridge and the noise wall? And those kind of specifics, they have a rough alignment for the noise wall, so we're going to engage with them. And then here, how much, where can this go exactly between the guardrail on the highway with the new lane and this noise wall? So right now, we're comfortable that any one of these options can work and fit. Now it's the details. So that's where, once we, we'll come back with more confidence the next time. And then from there, then it's designed, topless survey is done, working with MINDOT, making all these different projects mesh and work together. And then MINDOT's got to approve the layout because it's going over their highway. They got to approve where it goes over, how high it is, and then even some of the aesthetics. They won't just let us put whatever we want over the highway. So they have a review process and approval process. The city is managing this entire project, which is good. It usually speeds up the process. So once we have the preliminary design, we get that approval from MINDOT, then we do final plans, we get another approval, and then we can move forward with bids and all those stuff. And along the way, there's some legal requirements and agreements because of the state bonding money that's been appropriated to this project. So that's kind of what we're doing. The only thing you'll see next is soil boardings. We got to do soil boardings yet. But we don't want to do soil boardings until we know which one of these we're doing because we want to drill holes in the soil where the bridge is going to know how to support the bridge structure. Yep, thank you.
Good. That prompt any other questions from council members or comments? All right, good. Thanks for that presentation. And now we're going to pivot and go right to Resolution 2023-97. You have this matter as well. And this is the proposed neighborhood reconstruction project embodied in improvement, BA 48465. And this is, as I say, for the Concord BNC neighborhood. And you have recommended that we adopt the resolution, and you're going to make a presentation on that now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, mayors, members of the council, and appreciate your time on Monday, December 11. That was a special meeting to listen on our very important street reconstruction program. We've been doing this for 20-plus years, and it's a very important thing to address our infrastructure in town. So we're going to discuss, just kind of answer the questions we heard at the last meeting, and I'll give you an update on our recommendations that were also in the packet. But we're going to talk about the Concord BNC first. So we had seven live comments at that public hearing on December 11. We had nine additional comments on the Better Together site. And again, we like to provide that variety of options for people to participate. Here's a map of the project area. I think everybody's real familiar with the neighborhood we're proposing to construct. In the comments we heard, there was some oppositions to our initial, I would say, our initial ideas for the street widths. Some of the parking, eliminating that was not supported. And some of our shared-use paths, the concrete versus asphalt was some more comments. And then the maintenance of the walks came up. So we've made some tweaks to our proposal and addressed most of these concerns. So I'm interested to hear how the council feels about that. And I'll start with this one. So Wooddale Avenue, and again, on the, on the, this portion of the map, if it's highlighted in green, that's the segment we're talking about. So this is that real interesting Nancy Lane, the Garrison Lane. The street existing is just 20 feet wide. There is parking on it today. And the right-of-way is only 30 feet wide, and it's between the, you know, the lakes there. So it's very tight, confined space. We proposed a six-foot, basically sidewalk raised up. We heard some comments of concerns of just operations of garbage trucks and snow plowing operations. So one unique block with only four properties, we had changed our recommendation to lower that sidewalk and make it flush with the pavement. So it's more of that shared street idea where we'd have six feet of concrete, dedicate that for bikes and pets, or just even pets. And then we'd have that 15 feet remaining for the automobiles, which with four homes down there, very few cars travel that segment of street. So not concerned with that. And if you happen to get a garbage truck and a school bus or whatever at the same time, they can't, we're going to design that pedestrian way to handle all loading because we're going to plow snow with our normal street plows. So that gets away of one of the comments we heard from the neighbor at 4443 about snow, snow removal of a sidewalk that's 400 feet long. We're just going to do it with our big street plows. So that addressed one question. Now, if I go a little bit north on Wooddale Avenue, here there was a comment about we were proposing to remove all the parking. We have space per our living streets plan to allow one side of parking. So we're proposing to leave that on the west side. No other changes in this area. Now, 64th Street, that's where a lot of the comments came. You heard that last time. So the first segment of 64th, so it's basically from the Wooddale Path, right at the base of the Ped Bridge, which we just talked about, to St. John's Avenue. That section today is 24 feet wide with two-sided parking. And we are still proposing that eight-foot-wide sidewalk shared-use path, but we want to move it to the south side. We heard those comments. We didn't have a concern. We just want to get the facility. And here, we have enough space to leave it as a raised kind of sidewalk. You know, you think about that curb. And then do the remaining space. So we have 20-foot-wide street, eight-foot concrete, shared-use path. We think we have room for the parking lane. We heard concerns about, some of those residential properties have nowhere other than right in front of their homes. We feel we can add the parking lane now. If in the future, there's some concerns with safety or some other concerns, we can also, we can always reanalyze it and put up some no-parking signs. But again, we think it's going to work because there's so limited traffic in this area. Now, moving west, so that additional segment of 64th from St. John's Avenue to Concord Avenue, today it's 24 feet wide with two-sided parking. We want to, we want to propose 24 feet wide, but include this same concept that we did on Wooddale, where we build an eight-foot-wide concrete section on that street at the same level as the street. So it signifies a different place, a safer place for pedestrians and bikes to go. And then the cars would have those two eight-foot drivelanes. And again, if they, if there's, you know, a lawn service parked there when they're not supposed to, there's still room to go around, drive on that concrete if you need to. And this provides that benefit of our big street plows can just plow the snow right off of it, and we go from there. So that's the proposal on 64th.
Would you compare that to your prior slide from St. John to Wooddale again?
Yeah, so the road width changes from 20 to 24 feet. So the driving surface for cars.
So there you've got the sidewalk elevated from the street, not sharing the street.
Yep.
And what's the reason for that distinction between St. John's and Wooddale versus St. John's and Concord?
Because we have enough space. That's where there's more room towards the MINDOT chain link fence. There's more room to just get a raised facility, which is really what we want for all our bikes and pets, is raise them up, get them off the street. In this neighborhood, we have a few blocks where it just doesn't work from an operation standpoint. So we want to raise it up. There's still room for parking, which was a concern. There's still room for two-way operations of cars. And we think it's just a little, a step above the facility of a shared-use path. It's basically because we have the space. Versus this one, we just don't have quite as much space. It gets a lot tighter when it starts to curve there along that Highway 62 and 64.
This is the strip, whether, you know, all the way, I'd say, from Concord to Rose Court, where people are saying, everybody will just walk in the street. So why don't you just design it in a way where you've got that almost like a woofer for pedestrians? And people are sharing the street like you've got from Concord to St. John's, all the way over to the footbridge. I don't know. I'm just telling, I'm just relating to what people are telling me, that no one's going to use the sidewalk. They're going to stay in the street because they're walking dogs and.
Heard that comment many times with many of our sidewalk projects.
We know it's always safer to separate people from traffic.
It's always safer. And I usually go up, the year after I'm walking around, I start asking questions. And usually the most vocal are, it's kind of nice to have a sidewalk off. I don't like walking in the street. It is kind of nice to be separated. So it's always tough to see, at this point, usually after the project, you get comments of support. So we just want to provide the safest facility. We can provide that elevated, separated here versus, we just don't have space on those other two little segments. And we think the compromise is a shared-use or that woofer-style facility.
I think another thing people expressed concern about was on the stretch from St. John's to Concord, that there were trees on the south side that could be impacted. And maybe they're thinking more about the sound wall impacting that than the street reconstruction work. Would there be anything about the street reconstruction work that would cause an impact to the trees?
The trees that I'm hearing also are on the south side of 64th. They are grown into the fence, into that chain link on each side. So we're not touching the chain link fence. So we don't anticipate any. Now, if there's, I'm not entirely sure how close maybe a tree is on the north side. But again, we want to match the width of the existing street. So I don't see tree removals. We try to limit those with all of our projects. There's a one-off here and there that we have to, and if there is, we'd work with the owners. But the trees are basically grown into that chain link fence. So we're going to have to have that discussion of, with the noise wall, and if that ramp is there for the Ped, or for the Ped Bridge. So there's two things that I think are going to impact those trees more than this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Then our last change is Concord Avenue, keeping that the same, but matching the style and going with concrete. We heard people don't think asphalt's appropriate. Concrete here actually makes a little more sense because we most likely won't have a boulevard. And then we can tie it into all the driveway aprons that are concrete anyway. It's like Blake Road, if you've driven that. It works real well, it works a little better. And it gives it, I think, a little higher-end look than your asphalt going through the neighborhood. So we're making that material change for that facility. So we recommend approving this project with these slight changes that have been detailed in your pack of materials. And we would recommend you approve Resolution Number 2023-97. And then there's just some other voting if there's any concerns about the bike pad versus assessments on this project. I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, let's see, folks have questions? Yes, member Jackson has some.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the pictures where the sidewalk is going to be the same with the street, that will be concrete, so it's visually separated. Okay, I wanted to make sure I was interpreting that right. So I think you've covered all the concerns that I heard. I am, I'm really glad you addressed the parking on 64th Street. That's, I've heard that from other reconstruct, street reconstructions where people are really concerned about be able to get deliveries and everything. And then you've solved the one-way, two-way issue as well. So thank you so much.
Welcome.
Member Rissar?
I appreciate the changes a lot. One thing that didn't come up was that when the sidewalk was proposed to be on the north side of 64th, it would have cut into people's driveways and made it even harder for workers who were there to park in the driveway. So it solved, it solves a lot of problems. There was one, I think it was a stretch of Wooddale, where you've got the sidewalk and, yeah, this one, okay. All the other images where there's parking, the parking is next to the sidewalk. And then here, it's not. And I'm kind of wondering if you could talk about that. And I'm kind of wondering if you could talk about that. Because my, I was thinking it makes it safer when you've got the parking next to the sidewalk.
Yeah, great comments, Member Rissler. We typically do put the parking next to the sidewalk facility to create a buffer.
Yep.
In this case, there is no parking on the east side. All the parking today is on the west side. And there's more available spots after our project because of driveways and stuff. So, you know, with the apartment there, and there's a couple businesses there that we just wanted to maximize, because you're along the lake there, so there's no driveway impacts and that kind of stuff. It just made sense.
Okay, that does make sense. I would like to make a plug, since it's going to be an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. And I believe this would be the only example of an eight-foot-wide sidewalk that residents would be required to shovel. But for the city to take on the task of removing snow along Concord and 64th, especially because that's going to be such an incredibly important pathway for people to get over to the park and shopping and all of that.
Okay. I guess I'd look for feedback from the City Council on that.
Member Rissler, were you proposing that the sidewalk on Wooddale from Garrison to Valley View be eight feet instead of six feet? I didn't quite...
No, I was talking about Concord and 64th.
You were just talking about Concord only?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Just trying to understand, make sure I understood what you were thinking about. Member Agnew.
Thank you. So if we could go back to the Wooddale slice, I appreciated Member Rissler's question, and I think that you answered it really well on why the parking is on the side that it's on. But I don't think I understood why we couldn't then also move the sidewalk to that same side.
We can, we can look at it. So I think if, if council approves the sidewalk, we can reevaluate what side makes sense. I'm thinking about the intersection of Valley View and Wooddale.
Yeah.
It's steep, there's a lot of challenges, a new signal system. You know, I have to ask my staff that really looked at the details, Aaron and Charlie, if there was a reason why it went on. We try to pick the side with the least impacts, but I can't answer that specifically because it never came up before. But if you approve a sidewalk, we can look at that again, and I can report back to this body of where it landed afterwards.
And my priority would be the safety, and I like having that buffer if it's feasible.
Okay.
And then, from a process perspective, if you could, and I think you went over this last time, but to reiterate, if we approve tonight, what are the things that are, you know, still going to fluctuate versus what is then set in stone?
Yeah, great question, Member Agnew. If council approves the project as I proposed with these changes, we'll get into design, full-speed design. And that's where we start to identify, there's some retaining walls on Concord, maybe there's a tree or two. We start to identify those things, and we send letters out to the residents that are directly impacted. And let's talk about your retaining wall, let's talk about your landscape, let's talk about that tree. We work directly with those impacted property owners on some of those details. And then we update the website with some updates and stuff like that. But keeping the people that need to be updated with specific impacts is what we do through design, through the end of February, go out for bids in March, and then back to this body for an award. So we can get the contractor lined up, they can secure materials and start construction usually in early May.
Thank you. So ultimately, the plans and everything that we reviewed tonight, save for maybe the sidewalk if it were to move to the other side, is going to be relatively set in stone based off of tonight's approval.
Correct.
Thank you.
If there's any major changes, we would bring that back to the City Council.
Thank you.
So segue off that question that Member Agnew raised. You know, it's, this is the reason I asked Member Rissler the question I did. Because when you look at this narrow section of street, and you've got the Cheryl concept going with eight-and-a-half-foot driving lanes, you've got a 14-foot planting strip on the west side and a 16-foot planting strip on the right side. It struck me that I should ask the question, why wouldn't we have an eight-foot-wide sidewalk there on one side or the other? Because we've got, it looks like we've got room. And then you've created a better buffer, because you've got it drawn as a behind-the-bulkhead sidewalk, which puts them right next to the cars. And so it strikes me that the wider the sidewalk is, the better off we are.
Thanks, Mayor. I totally agree. Create attention to detail. The software we use to create these graphics, we're set between kind of the parking lane and the sidewalk. The buffers on the side, we just threw numbers in there. It is so tight down Wooddale. There's water drops off on the west side, and we got landscaping and power poles and other things on the east side. So we're just, you know, we put six to eight feet of concrete for the sidewalk. I don't think we can get eight feet. We're that tight with all the features out there. So I would say just kind of disregard those planting strip numbers. There's not that much space in this particular section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good enough. Yeah, I know you'll do what you can through there.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, Member Agnew, for that question. Member Pierce, any?
Nope.
You're good. Okay. Anybody else that pumped any further curiosities? Okay, you're looking for passage of a resolution, you want an approval on resolution or suggesting an approval on Resolution 2023-97, which would be to authorize the Concord B and C Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project embodied in Improvement Number BA465, correct?
Correct.
All right, is there a motion of that effect?
So moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves, Member Agnew seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-97, which is the proposed reconstruction roadway project for Concord B and C neighborhoods. And it's embodied in Improvement Number BA465. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-97 is adopted. And I like what you told Member Agnew too about this is, is still a work in progress, and the neighbors are going to be able to help with the nuance of it and provide some good input yet.
Yeah, and if they got questions, reach out to our team, and we'll address the questions and come meet with people and answer those directly.
Especially, I got, I got quite a few questions on 64th. I think others did too.
There's a little confusion between this project, the Pet Bridge, and the noise wall, so I'm trying to clarify which step we are in each of those projects, so.
Okay, let's talk about the Southdale B neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So again, on that same evening, we discussed the Southdale B neighborhood as part of our street reconstruction program. We had one person comment live that evening. We received two comments on Better Together Edina. Again, we provided those various options to participate. And the comments were pretty simple. Move the parking on Berry Road from the east side to the west side. And there was some, a little discussion or confusion about sidewalk maintenance, irrigation systems, and pet fences, which we all take care of during construction. We fix all those things, and we talked about that last time. So we basically listened to the one comment, and we flipped the parking from the east side to the west side. There is more room on that side. There's less driveways, you get more parking stalls. And this one, going back to our previous comments, I'm less concerned about the buffer because there's a boulevard here. There already is a natural buffer with trees and stuff like that. So really, this is the one substantial change that we made in our recommendation, otherwise everything else is consistent. And when I spoke of the street lighting last time, Mayor, you brought this up, I was, I was wrong. So I went back. Picture on the left is existing light out there. That's a traditional fixture. We're going to put back a traditional fixture. Excel has that where we can just lease it and not have to do city operation and maintenance. So it's not the acorn, but it is still more decorative than the cobra head of your concern. So I misspoke last time. Pretty simple, I'm back to where we're at. We think this project's feasible and cost-effective, and I would ask for an approval of that Resolution Number 2023-98. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions on this project.
Yes, thank you. Director Milner, questions for Director Milner on Southdale B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction, that proposed project? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-98? And that's the Southdale B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project found in Improvement Number BA-464.
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves it. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the resolution as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2023-98, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2023-98 is adopted.
Thank you.
And now we're going to let you off the hook for a while. Thanks for all those good presentations. And we're going to go back to Manager Neil. We're going to talk about adopting a budget for 2024.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're going to get our presentation queued up here. After the, after the hearing at the December 5th, council meeting, council asked staff to, to go back and take another look at some of our expenditures and come back for a final budget approval tonight, which is what we're doing. This is back, this is the agenda for tonight. Let's go back one. Just to confirm our timeline, talk about our budget and levy for '24 and '25, community impacts of our investments, the tax impact of our property tax levy, and then next steps, which there's only one, and take some questions and have some discussion tonight. This is the same timeline that we have looked at on a number of times. Every time, actually, we put this on the screen, we have one box left to check, and that's the December 19th City Council Meeting, last day to adopt our budget and levy. This is the proposed property tax levy for 2024. We're also showing budget or act budget for 2023. We're also showing proposed for '25, but year action tonight doesn't have any formal impact on 2025, only 2024. This is the same, these are the same budget numbers that we have been really looking at since about the first week of September with materially. It's, we've looked at that 9.15, I believe. We certified it at 9.37, so it has gone down just a little bit. What makes up our proposed tax levy? We've looked at 9.15%. How does it break out? Most of it breaks out in, for salary and benefits for employees throughout, throughout the organization, but really most, most of them in our general fund and general fund tax-supported areas, which is what is funded by the tax levy. It's also worth noting, I think, that this note that we're proposing to use $2 million in one-time revenues from our Budget Stabilization Fund, and I'll show you what that looks like here in a second. One of the things we haven't talked much about is, is what would our levy look like if we hadn't used, if we hadn't used some mitigating revenues already? And that's the third bullet in this case. The levy is a 14.3% increase without mitigating measures. So the mitigating measures that we've already applied to sort of buy down this levy is $2 million of one-time revenues from our Budget Stabilization Fund. And we have also taken the, the new employees that are included in this budget, which there are six of them, I believe. And we have started them midway through the year on July 1st rather than January 1st, and that has substantial savings with it as well. So looking ahead, one thing that we want council to consider is, because we have bought down in, in certain respects, the levy from 14 to 9%, we want to be careful not to, we want to be careful about doing more of that, because eventually that will come to catch up with us as we run out of one-term, one-time revenues. Next year, 2025 is going to be, is going to be a lift, I have to tell you. And most of that lift is associated with hiring 10 new employees, some of them police, but six of them in fire, and also starting to pay on the, the new fire station. So those two things are occurring in 2025. This is the estimated levy impact, so of, of the median value home goes to $696,000. That's a 5.3% increase in the median value home from 2022. And you can see on the, on the gross side or the macro side, our estimated market value as a community went from $15.5 billion to $16.8 billion from '22 to '23 for an 8% increase. And what's interesting, every year, we take a look at the comparison between what is our tax levy going up and, and what, and how does that factor into impact? So when we look at the impact of, on the median single-family home of, of a 9.1% levy impact, it comes down to 7.5. So it's not, it's not a percent-by-percent comparison. So the, the impact is a little less than the levy increase itself. And you can see here what the, the comparison between '23 and '24 in the median value home, what the difference is in the home value, and then what the difference is from, from a tax payable standpoint. This is where we try to, Alicia McAnders, Finance Director, put this screen together, because we had some interest from council about, well, what would it look like? What, how does a taxpayer benefit if we are to, if we're able to reduce the levy? And if we reduce the levy in this case from a 9.15% levy increase to 8.15, there's an annual savings of, of $20 off of the 149. So instead of that number being $149 increase for the median single-family home per year of the 9.15% levy increase, if you do that for an 8.15% increase, it's $129, right? And so if you do it for 7.65 and 7.15, it's, it scales down or scales up in terms of savings. Our next, our next step is really the last step in our process, is adopting the Resolution 2023-95, adopting the '24 property tax, 2024 property tax levy and operating budget. I'm happy to answer any questions council members may have.
Questions for Manager Neil with regard to the proposed budget for fiscal 2024? You know, I think it's important to point out that we've been working on this matter probably since June. And on a regular basis. And we started out with, and this is, I think, you know, for the benefit of people at, at home or listening in or will be watching this, I had somebody leave me a message, said, hey, well, what am I getting for my money for that increase? You know? Tell me what I'm getting for that, for that general levy increase that you're proposing. And, and as we've gone through and looked at those pillars that we, we talk about all the time that are kind of the basis of our communities, the strong foundation, and I look back at the, the things that our, our neighborhoods needed and folks said were important to them. In the strong foundation category, we've got the Cahill Area Sanitary Sewer Capacity Expansion. Their fire station number three site selection and planning process is ongoing. We've got a chance to do an art center with the county where we're not borrowing money to be a capital partner, where they've said we'd like to have you in there as a tenant. And so that's another piece of potential borrowing we don't need to worry about, but we've got to think about programming. The Grandview Area Transportation improvements that we've done, the, the reassessment of City Hall Space Needs, York Haven's sanitary sewer capacity expansion. And in that list was Fred Richards Park and Braemar Park and Arena. But I think at the time we started our initial work on this, we might not have known whether we had local option sales tax passed or not. So we've got that money to work with, which is great, that sales tax. And then in reliable service, it was, we've got more mental health calls to deal with, Edina Public School elections, the THC cannabis legislation impacts and how we're going to deal with that in our community. And then supporting staff who experience wellness or post-traumatic stress disorder needs, just like the broader community. Our affordable housing goals, we're looking at some of those, those activities, preparing for the comprehensive plan update. And, and then there are smaller things like the Quality of Life Survey and the refinement of community engagement processes. But as you pointed out, when we look at investments that we're making in our town together, this town that we all own together as taxpayers, we're looking at increased investment in technology systems to ensure secure, reliable systems that protect us against threats and work when they are most needed in times of emergency or natural hazard. We're also looking at a steady street lighting replacement program to keep our streets safe and reduce energy consumption. And then, as you pointed out, we've, we've responded to the requests of our town to be as safe as we can possibly be and stressing public safety. So we're adding four patrol officers. We're adding a mental health response officer, and we're going to add a neighborhood engagement officer, which people in our town have been asking about for quite some time. And then we've got more complexity on, on emergency medical responses. And so we're adding six firefighters in 2025 at the new fire station. And, you know, all of these things are, are elements that our town thinks are important. And so when you go to doing the work and you're trying to figure out how to make it as affordable as possible, it's, it's tough to look at a nine-point-plus, you know, increase in the general levy. And we know that that's not a direct correlation, and you pointed out in one of your slides that what 9.1 for the median-priced home maybe equates to 7.5, and, and, and I forget the number. the number, $12 a month or something on the increase. But still, it's a tax increase. And so we, we should be able to justify it and tell the people in our town that we're doing exactly what you wanted us to do, but it's, it's going to cost all of us more from an investment standpoint in what we do in our town to, to keep everybody safe and to keep it prosperous. So pointing out these things that people are wondering, well, what am I getting for my money? Those are the kinds of things that you're getting for your part ownership in this town. And, and, you know, we're thought like we're all shareholders, and we're making an investment in our, in our company, our town, and to make it a better place. And so I think all of that information that you shared with us over the past six months has really been important to get us more comfortable with something that's sort of eternally discomforting. So thanks for that. And, and I know you went through it in a fairly cursory manner tonight, and folks that are listening in for the first time might be saying, well, how come nobody's asking any questions? Well, it's because we, we've exhausted you, I think. But I think at the, at the 11th hour here, it's important to point out what we asked you to think about because that's what people in our town ask us to think about, and, and this is what we're going to deliver for them in response to what they want. So, yeah, Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, you know, I think it is, I do think it's extremely important for us on certain things that we should all be on one accord. I kind, I think this is one of those things. But I kind of feel like I've made the same comments before, and so I'm going to make them again, but I'm gonna vote for the levy. But I feel like every time, like my hands are tied, like I don't really have a choice. And the challenge I have is that I don't know how I can impact that number. And so we talk about, Mayor, you went through lots of things, so we have had that conversation about what value do you get for it? And we, you know, we have this list of value that we can all espouse, right? But very few of those things do we do the next step to tie it to actual dollars. And so that makes the conversation challenging to have. And I know we've done a lot of work, but at the end of the day, it kind of comes to you're just gonna have to trust us. And like, that's not a, that's not a great feeling when you're running a $200 million enterprise. And so if this was a, you know, a for-profit company, I wouldn't approve this budget, right? I would ask again for, all right, how, what are my, what are the factors that impact these dollars? What kinds of controls as a, a business leader or as a resident in this case, do I have to impact this number? It makes me nervous when I look at the 9% to 13%, and we still aren't able to really clarify with specificity where those dollars are going to be spent and why. And so my, my ask would be, I know it's hard to do. Like, it, it might be worth asking some of the CFOs in Edina and the CEOs in Edina to help us take this budget and help us figure out how to message what we do, clarify what the levers are that are things that are in our control and things that aren't in our control. And it's totally fine, Scott, if it's 200 million, I'm totally making this up, and the only control a resident has is on 3% of it. If that's the case, then tell them, we have to tell people that, and it is what it is at that point. But today, I don't, I really don't feel like we're still able to do that. And I think that's the next level of work from a fiduciary standpoint that I think we need to be able to do to show not only the value, but then what, what do we have control over? What decisions could we make to lower the, the, the impact? Because without doing that, we put ourselves in a position on that one slide where you say if it's 7%, it's a $20 difference. And I, the way I would hear that as a resident is us saying, well, it's just $20, right? Or it's just 12 bucks. And it's easy to do that when you're talking about these big numbers, but it's still not quite, it's not the right message to be sending. And I know we've talked about this and we're not sure how to do it, but I, I think we have to be able to do that, especially if we're talking about going from 9 to 13% next year. We really have to be able to, to do that. So, thank you.
Any response on the?
Well, from, from 9 to 13%, I, the, the two big drivers in that are 10 new full-time city employees and a, and a million dollars plus in, in debt service that we're taking on. That, that, that's more than half. In fact, it's about two-thirds of that 13%. So we know where that's going. And in terms of our control over it, you know, we had control over that part of our budget probably two years ago, and we made some decisions that, that are just kind of coming in, in their line in 2025 that were planned really, as we decided to build a new fireplace, fire station and equip it with the people and equipment that's going to be there.
Right. And so I don't disagree with any of that. I'm talking about how do we message that so the residents really understand what that is? And I, I just don't feel like, to a great extent, that we have done that in a way that people can internalize it. And so that's the, I mean, that's the conversation to me. How can we do that in a, a way that's easy for people to consume? And then here's the funny thing, if we do that well, then you've got the opposite, right? We have the opposite of what we have, we had today with the legislative priorities. Then you've got people who understand it, that when the neighbor calls them and they say, well, Jesus, going up 13%, because that's what's gonna happen. And then that neighbor can say, oh, that's true, but remember that fire station we said we needed? Then, right, some of that money is going there, and then we can have that conversation because we have smarter, informed residents with some of these issues. And so that's, I'm just offering that so that next year, perhaps we can be in a different, we'll have different information, put us in a little different position than we are today.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I miss Lisa Schaefer in this conversation because she has walked us through in work sessions, the negotiations with our various labor unions. And one of the things that's in here is a big shock in the cost of workers' compensation insurance. And that's not sexy, and it's not fun, but it's what the law requires, and it's a big chunk of the cash, it's the increase in this. We have no control over that. So I think the, the conversation about what it is to negotiate with all the different unions that the city negotiates with is very complex. It's not particularly juicy or, you know, engaging. It's super important, and when you're in the negotiation, it's very engaging, of course. But to tell the general public about that, it's hard to message that. One of the things that I noticed, and I went through this several times really in, in detail, and there were building a lot of infrastructure. So we are switching from an assessment process for our streets to attack, you know, income or property tax to pay for our streets. That's a big chunk of this as well. And that was a policy that we talked about and debated and had a task force, and it was the right answer. It was the, the best bad answer. None of them were great answers, and I'm very solid with that, but that's a big chunk of more money that's driving this increase as well. And that's, we want to invest in our streets. We like our nice, even smooth Edina streets that are plowed nicely. Snow plowing is very expensive. We could cut back on snow plowing. We could cut back on street sweeping. It changes our quality of life. It changes our surface water cleanliness and, but that would save money. But people will tell us, we like to have clean surface water. We like well-plowed streets. We're willing to pay for that. The street lighting, nobody asked for our streetlights to run out and to lose our ability to pay for them, but our streetlights are breaking down. That's another thing that's driving an increase here. It adds up. And, and the thing about a city in my mind is that it's not a single-purpose business. We've got parks, and we've got firemen, and we've got police, and we have all different voting. All these things are very different functions. And so there's no simple narrative to say where all this is going, but I'm really proud of the fact that we take really good care of our facilities here, that we take good care of our streets, we take good care of our buildings, and we really recruit. And one of my comments is about our canine that retired. I mean, even our canine dog is an award-winning dog. So we have just these incredible resources here, and that costs money. And people like that, and, and I'm happy to pay for that. But sometimes we have these, whether it's health insurance or workers' compensation, these jumps, and I'm happy to talk about that, and I don't have the perfect messaging, but I'm really proud of the care that we take of what we've been entrusted with. And sometimes that gets more expensive, and when we add a fire station and stuff, it's going to get even more expensive. So to me, the story works, but it's not a simple story that's easy to message, but it, it all adds up. And, and some of these things, we don't have any control over, but we can always cut back on the level of service that we provide or the level of care we have for infrastructure. But I choose not to because I'm, I'm really proud of our beautiful city.
Yeah, I guess always good to keep in mind that basically 70% of the budget is labor because of the responsibilities that we have. So anyway, thanks for those comments as well. I think one of the difficult things to explain to folks is, well, wait a minute, in 2010, our property was worth, let's say, 10 billion, now it's worth 16 billion. How come my taxes keep going up? To, to explain the idea that you're spreading tax across a bigger base as opposed to like what you did, you know, where you grew up in Iowa, where they use a mill levy, it's a different kind of system, and that's something that I think is always important to be able to explain to people. So anyway, it's a complex situation, and your points, everybody raises are really good ones. To the Resolution 2023-95, adopting the budget for the City of Edina for the year 2024, not dealing with 2025 yet, just 2024, and establishing the proposed tax levy payable in 2024, is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, and Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-95, which adopts the budget for the City of Edina for the year 2024 and establishes the proposed tax levy payable in 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-95, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2023-95 is adopted, and we have a budget for 2024. Thank you for all your hard work, and our, our thanks to the departing Alicia McAndrews as well, and all of her team. Now, we've got one more significant matter on the agenda before we hit the holidays here, and it's a sketch plan review for 7300 Metro Boulevard. And Carrie Teague, our Community Development Director, is going to introduce the matter. And then we've got a team here of Chris Whitehouse from DJR Architects, Edina Enda and Dante Sees, Dr. Todd Geisler is with us, I think, and Benjamin Krasnack and Brent Jacob Hemple, Brent Jacobson from Hemple Properties, all, looks like we got the whole team here, so. Okay, all right. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'll just quickly tee it up. The proposal is for a 6,000-square-foot dental office, basically to be built within the parking lot. A formal application requires a site plan review and a first-floor height variance. So this is one where we don't have a lot of discretion. The primary issue for consideration is the location of the parking lot. As proposed, they're proposing parking lot for the patients in the front of the building. While it's not written in code that we require buildings, the parking to be behind the, a building, but it is a site plan configuration that we're trying to accommodate. So that's really the main issue. They are asking for a variance from the first-floor height requirement. A portion of the entry would be 20 feet tall, but portions of the building, they would ask for variances in that regard. So with that, I'll let the team come up, and they have a presentation to show the detail of the project.
All right, very good. And then please give us your name and your business address for the record as you come up, and we'll get you a handheld microphone.
Hi, I'm Ben Krasnack with Hemple Real Estate, the developer for the project. And I brought my cheerleaders here, my cheer squad here, Dr. Todd Geisler right next to me. And yeah, we're, we're going to run through about 90 minutes of PowerPoint presentations here, and then we will move to, you know, some, some feedback from you. So go through here. It's a joke, hopefully, right? It never works, yeah.
Maybe he's not a terrible joke.
Yeah, so just a quick thing about Hemple, we're a local developer based in Ian Prairie, just right across the highway from Edina, so very close to this site. We've owned three office buildings in Edina for about, close to 17 years now, so familiar with the city, and several project members do live in the city as well. It's just a few different types of projects we do. We do shopping centers, office buildings, industrial, and of course, medical buildings as well. And so here we're, here to talk about a medical property, and so here's a couple of buildings that we've developed recently, one in Savage, one in Maple Grove, have a similar building in Apple Valley as well. So we like these kind of high lobby presences, looks great from the outside, creates a really nice feel when you're on the inside and in the lobby.
You're not suggesting to Dr. Geisler it's going to work out of a Caribou Coffee Shop here, are you?
We're just going to switch the name on the front door. Yep. So, Dr. Todd, do you want to talk a little bit about your?
Hello, members, council members. Todd Geisler, I live in Parkwood and Halls, lived there since 2009. My practice is at 50th and France, and although I love 50th and France, one of the biggest complaints that we have from most of our patients of all ages, but especially those folks that are 70 and older, which is about a third of my patients, is kind of the parking at 50th and France. And so we've outgrown that clinic, and we're looking to move, and we're hoping to have a very nice, safe entrance into our practice because I do do surgery, and we have to occasionally wheel people out in wheelchairs. A lot of our folks come in with walkers and canes and wheelchairs. And so what we're trying to do with the parking is to respect the city planning initiatives, but also keep our patients safe. So that's, that's the main objective here.
We'll keep going through some slides here. So the site that we're working on is 7300 Metro Boulevard, currently occupied by about 110,000 square foot office building that we occupy, that we own. And it's actually doing fairly well, about 90% leased right now, but we do have extra parking on the site. And this is a, this has been an issue for us really since before COVID, even where the types of tenants that we have in the building are a lot of small businesses, not super dense call center type of tenants, and so they don't have a high parking requirement. Right now, we're parked at pretty close to 4.5 stalls per thousand square feet, which is above the city code. Now, here's the existing building. It's there. That's what our marketing department put together. And then this is from Carrie's presentation. It doesn't look quite as good, but as you can see, it's, it's really surrounded by a SEA parking, and we like to take a look at, you know, developing a small portion of it. The site is zoned for planned office, so medical offices, permitted use in that district. And so we don't have any issue with that medical and dental offices, clinics are allowed. So we're looking to take the southeast corner of the site, about one acre, develop it in about a 6,800 square foot medical building. It will self-park, so it'll be four stalls per thousand square feet, so we're, we're just meeting the code, we're not exceeding it. the code, we're not exceeding it. There will be cross-parking with 7300 in case there is overflow. And this is, like I said, a kind of a proposed building type. Obviously, we can, we're not going to build the exact same building, and I know Dr. Geisler has aspirations of, you know, different finishes and stuff, but, you know, it would be just as nice, if not nicer, so.
So where's the curb cut for the site? Oh, I see it there.
Yeah, here you go. So basically, you come in off of Metro Boulevard, which is kind of a frontage road, Highway 100, and into the site here. And as you look here, I've overlaid the building onto the aerial. So right here is where the building would be sitting. We're proposing patient parking in the front and employee parking in the back. And this will be kind of a high-end finish, and so we have our 20-foot-high lobby here. In the back, we also have trash enclosure, electrical transformer, those kinds of, you know, kind of necessary utilities that you need for a building. Just somewhat of a view of, you know, where the building will sit.
So no adjustment required on the curb cut?
Right, yeah, we'll use existing curb cut. So you pull in the site, here's the employee parking. Again, just more of a line drawing of this, employee parking, garbage, et cetera, so. Obviously, we're going to have some handicap parking. We want that to be very close to the front door, easily accessible. Don't want to have to cross the drive lane. So we've taken us to planning commission, and we've accepted some of their commentary and also from Director Teague. We're going to add a sidewalk along Metro Boulevard. There's no sidewalk there at all right now, so it'll be a bit of a sidewalk to nowhere until some adjoining property owners decide to do something with it. We're excited to add solar panels to the roof for sustainability, and then also adding bike racks. They may not be great for the patients, but perhaps some of the staff would want to ride their bike to work. Once again, this is kind of a main thoroughfare. There is an easement through here to get to this building as well, which is 7301 Oms Lane, and it is kind of a secondary access for them. And then this is our main building entry here. There's also tenant entrances on this as well, so shifting the drive lane up to here would kind of disrupt the apple cart there in terms of, you know, those entrances. So really, our request is to go with a, you know, 13-to-15-foot clear height inside the building to the bottom of the beams. You know, we think that kind of future proves the building still. And, you know, from an energy efficiency standpoint, we think it doesn't make sense for us to build a 20-foot-high building and then put a 10-foot ceiling in it, which is really what you need for a doctor's office, is nine- or 10-foot ceiling. You don't want to go, you know, super high and feel like you're in a 10-by-10 room and at the bottom of a pit. So, you know, benefits to the city, obviously, we're densifying an existing parking lot, so there's no new hardscape being created. We're increasing the tax base. You know, and Dr. Todd, I hate to say it, people don't really want to know you, at least not professionally, right? Like, you don't want to know Dr. Todd and need to, you know, see him, but when you're in that pain, you know, you're happy that he's there. And this is an expansion for him, so he's growing the size of the clinic. There will be new doctors, new assistants, and, you know, other administrative jobs that are created that are all good-paying jobs. Also, there's a stormwater retention area being added, and then the new sidewalks. So it's quite a few benefits as well. And so this is a sketch plan, so we wanted to get your feedback before we spend more time and money on, you know, putting plans together and kind of make sure we're on the right path, so.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Jacobson.
We're open for Q and A.
All right, let me ask Member Pierce if he has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the only question I have, it's a little hard to visualize what this is going to look like when you're adding it into an existing parking lot. And so the rendering really doesn't show that, and I, you know, you could tell by the blueprint a little bit. But I would like to kind of see from different perspectives what that property will look like with this structure on there. So if you can do some rendering so that we're able to see that in relation to everything else that's there, that would be great. I do like the idea of using that space a lot. And so we've talked a lot about reuse, and so I think that's a really good idea to be able to do that. And so the questions I'm asking, not only do I want to see it for this, for this project, but it's kind of interesting, it's an interesting idea that we might find other potential uses for something like that. So I would like to see that. Other than that, actually, oh, no, and then my other question was related to the ceiling height. Like, we've had that now come up, I'll say a bunch of times, I can't count bunches, but more than once that's come up with the request to not do the 20, the 20 feet. And so I think for us, we should kind of lean into that. You know, twice is two data points, three is a trend. We're far beyond three at this point. And so I think it'd be great for us, as a next step, to really lean in and understand that particular requirement, and if we need to consider making a change there, beyond just this particular project.
We're hopeful to bring something forward in the first half of next year.
Okay, thank you. And that's it.
All right, I'll go to Member Jackson. I'm working my way out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at this, and it's such a, it looks like it's going to be a really beautiful building, and I would love to be able to pull it out to the curb. Walk me through how the parking lot works and the logic behind putting in the front. I'm sure there is one, but let me know why that is, because I'd love to see that. It's a beautiful sight for a beautiful building. It's going to be a nice asset, I think, but I'd love to see that 20-foot entrance closer to the street.
Sure. Our concern is that if we shift the building, as we've designed it with the lobby on the front side of the building, that then our customers would have to cross this drive aisle, which, once again, is the main, this is the main road coming out of Metro Boulevard. And so it's 110,000-square-foot office building next to another 110,000-square-foot office building. So there can be a bit of traffic that comes in and out of there. And if someone is leaving their endodontic surgery under anesthesia, you know, in a wheelchair, you know, we don't think that's as desirable of a situation. And so then you get to, well, why don't you put the parking in the back of the building? Well, then our lobby would need to be on the backside of the building, and then our transformer and our garbage is on the front of the building on the highway, and we don't think that's as desirable of an outcome for the city as having a really nice, beautiful facade facing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. It's, I'm like, I know, I just couldn't quite get there on my own. Thank you.
Member Richard.
I listened to the planning commission meeting, and I kind of want to say if we, as a municipality, are telling developers that they need to have X amount of transparency, they need to have their facade facing the street, and they can't have a parking lot in front of their facade, I would love to see examples of exactly how that's supposed to work, because it is, it's not possible, really, and I completely get the safety aspects of it, and I think this really works well. I would echo Member Pierce's comments, but do it in terms of the transparency, and I just wonder if, you know, that's something that you wanted, or if it was a requirement, and maybe you didn't really want to have that much transparency. Because I think we kind of have this idea that we need to be able to walk by a building and see who's in it and what they're doing, and I'm not sure, in terms of function, if that really makes sense for all cases. The other thing is, you know, I think about that 20-foot ceiling height, and I was thinking about, you know, you go to a medical facility, and sometimes they have a picture on the ceiling that you can look at, and I just started thinking about, you wouldn't even be able to see it, it'd be a little dot way, way up. But so I just, I like it. I think you're doing a lot with this space, and I really don't have anything that I would change, so, thank you.
Number Ego.
Thank you so much. So thank you for coming tonight and for the presentation. I'll start with the pieces that I do like. Thank you for adding a sidewalk, even though it won't go anywhere yet. The intention is that it will someday. And I also appreciate the inclusion of solar. I love seeing that everywhere, so thank you. I love repurposing our vast seas of parking into building, so that's a great, I think, use overall. But I think that's where kind of the positives for me end. You know, at the highest level, this is a single-story building with a single purpose. You know, and I know that our Cahill District Plan wasn't approved as is, and that we're still going back and working on that. But in the proposal that was recommended, that was slated as high employment area. And so when I think about us continuing to take shape and evolve what that area is going to look like, I don't think that a part of the plan will be more single-story, single-use buildings. So that part of it, I think, is really perplexing for me. I think I also really struggle with needing to have parking on two sides of this building when it's already in a sea of parking. So I obviously watch the planning commission. I know your focus on safety, but I guess, do you expect this to be more or less safe than walking into Target, as an example? That was a question.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure you're done. I think the situation with these people, are they not customers, they're patients, and so they're coming in, they're getting anesthesia a lot of times, and then, like Todd said, they're elderly. But I think it's the anesthesia that gives us pause by saying, yeah, this is the same as going to Target, because it's not.
If I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, when someone goes under anesthesia, they are then wheelchaired out by an employee to their vehicle. Is that correct?
Right, and we don't want them going across the 24-foot busy, you know, driveline to do that.
Okay. I don't see those concerns. I also would really be curious as to what that traffic really looks like, because in all of the aerial photos that we saw, there's not every parking space used, which leads me to believe there's not extremely heavy traffic in this area.
It only takes one car, right? So we're not concerned about, you know, is there a steady stream, you'll never be able to make it across. It's more about a car veering around Metro Boulevard and veering in the parking lot. You know, that's, it's supposed to be, I think, a 25 or 30 mile an hour road, but people go 50 on it, and so, you know, someone pulling in, we just don't want somebody to get wiped out, so.
Okay, and so I guess if the concern then is even just one singular car, like, there's no place that anyone could be going into that's a parking lot where there's not going to be any traffic. And so I just, I don't see the need here, and I really like the idea of aligning that glassy kind of featuring wall towards the sidewalk there that's beautiful and onto the streets as being that focal if what we're doing is evolving this area. And I think that's, I think that's kind of my overall, my overall reaction to it, so thank you.
Okay, just a few follow-ups on that. So I mean, if we shifted and we put the lobby on the west side, we'd still have the translucent requirement on the east side of the site. So that would be operatories or operating rooms, which nobody wants to see in. You know, the doctor doesn't want, you know, people seeing what's going on there, gawking, and so you're going to end up with just blinds down all the time, and you don't have that active use.
Yeah, I like the idea of still having the glassy lobby on the, oh my gosh, you're testing my, on the east side, so along Metro. But I would just put the bulk of the parking in the sea of parking that's just north of the building. That's where I would really focus, and then you could have the front door still be on that side, but that wall be that lobby area. Thank you.
I'm still confused too by the, you know, when I look at the site plan, and I'm looking at the, you know, if you pull the site plan up, it has a greenery on the proposed building site. You're using the existing drive aisle. I think you're actually having that parking lot on the east side next to where the new sidewalk would go poses more risk for people than doing something else with it, and we'll talk about that in a second. So what I see, what I see potentially happening is somebody coming northbound on the frontage road on Metro Boulevard wants to turn in to the curb cut there, and then they got to turn left immediately into the parking lot. I could see someone coming with the speeds they travel there, hitting them from behind as they try to slow down to make that tight turn into the parking lot that's on the east side. If you're coming from the north to the south, and you turn in to the right, and now you got to immediately turn to the right again and cross the drive aisle, I could see all kinds of conflict points there. So I don't get why you can't slide the building all the way to the east and put all your parking on the west and still create a situation where people aren't going across the drive aisle to get to their car, because you've just gotten rid of the parking on the east and shifted it over to the west. So what am I missing?
I think our concern is this parking to the west is too far from the front door.
Well, move your front door. Move your front door to the west. Why do you want your front door over on the east? I mean, if you have your parking on the west, and you want it to be close to your front door, then put your front door in the west and just flip your, flip your footprint, flip your schematic. And what's the deal with the operating rooms? I mean, you're not convincing me that they're not going to adjust to somebody looking, you know, worrying about somebody looking into the operating room through the windows. They're going to maintain privacy for patients, and so that, to me, was a real weak argument about people come parking and looking in the windows of the surgery areas.
The quantity of windows, I think, is 75% on that side.
Yeah, well, I like the way you've got the architecture set up. I just don't see why you can't flip the design, and I think you're more at risk on the west side or east side for your parking than you would be if you moved the building over to the east further and complied with some of those observations from the comprehensive plan, and then put your parking on the west, and then people can either come directly into the, they should have a couple of different entry points, actually. There should be an entrance on the west side, just like you've got it drawn here, where you've got those half a dozen stalls, where a couple of them are really long, don't seem to make any sense. They look like they're for elongated vehicles or, you know, trucks or something.
You can bring that up with Mr. Whitehouse. I think you forgot to put the line in, but those are, should be stalls.
Yeah, so, you know, so I'm still struggling with it. I just don't get it.
Well, I think our issue is we're having, like, so many different city rules that are kind of running into each other, and so.
Isn't your architect here?
Yeah, he's here.
Well, bring your architect up here.
So we've got the 75% requirement on this side, right? I believe we also have a sign ordinance, so you can only have one sign on the building. And so you put your sign on one side of the building, but your entrance is going to be on the other side, it's going to be confusing. And then, yeah, just trying, like I said, manage all the sustainability.
You want the sign on the, on the frontage roadside, correct?
Right. But entrance would be on the far side then.
But why does it have to be over the entrance?
It just usually makes sense to put.
I mean, you don't have it over the entrance in that drawing, or in that other one you showed us. That was to the right of all the glass.
Yeah, in Maple Grove, we put it on all four sides, which is required, or allowed, so.
Hello, I'm Chris Whitehouse.
I'd rather worry about multiple signage than, I just think we need to get this right. You know, and there's things you can do to conform with the comprehensive plan that still let Dr. Geisler do what he needs to do in his building, because overall, it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong. I'm just, I just don't think it's quite right yet. Go ahead, Mr. Architect, yeah.
Chris Whitehouse.
Chris Whitehouse, yes, thank you. Mr. Whitehouse, welcome. And you're from DJR.
I'm with DJR.
Give us your business address too, please.
The business address is 333 Washington Avenue North in Minneapolis. The business address is 333 Washington Avenue North in Minneapolis.
Still in the same old place?
Yes.
All right, good.
Old, yeah. First, to address flipping the building, like Ben was saying, the one requirement that we are dealing with is that east side has to be 75% glass transparent stuff. So it just, the building lays itself out if you're going to do this high, the 20-foot-high element where you have all your glass, you're putting your nice materials. It just makes sense for that to be on the side where the city is asking for it to be. The city is asking for it to be on the street side. If we flip the building and reverse the program, as you say, again, we have the transformers, a transformer has to go somewhere. We have a trash enclosure that has to go somewhere. Those are other reasons we would rather not have our nice entry lobby over next to the trash enclosure.
Okay, so what are your comments about that, Carrie?
Well, you could move the trash enclosure to the south. Have, as you were talking about, two entry points, kind of what happened on that medical building over on Berry Road, where they had two entrances. I guess that would be the type of thing that could happen here.
The GI body building?
I think Todd, I'll let Todd discuss. One more thing I want before Todd discusses the layout that he'd desire. It was asked how would this be different if we moved over to the east and we asked people, the closest parking spaces would be across the drive aisle, how is that different than Target? Target has two, three, sometimes four stop signs along that stretch there. And I don't believe that we will be putting stop signs in this situation as well. They recognize that has a dangerous situation, so they make you stop. So that would be one difference.
Yeah, Doctor, your input too would be important.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Your input's important too, so thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the layout of the building. Generally, we do not want two entrances.
Okay.
Number one. The way that our building is aligned is it flows around so that as you enter in one area, the patient enters, they get their 3D taken, they get their work done, and then they exit coming back up to the front desk where we have our staff, but in a private area so that they can discuss their financial things, not out in front of the public. That's part of the reason why my current location's not good, because we're talking finances right out in front of every other patient. So the idea is to kind of around robin as they come in. And then they exit with our same front desk staff that's able to help them, but it's in a private area. And they exit in a separate, out of a separate door. So two entrances would not work for us, and I would not be able to staff the two entrances.
And so what I think you're saying is that the city's requirement that the glass be on the east side necessitates that that be the entrance point. And so then it makes sense that you have the parking lot over there to the east too. Is that right?
Yes.
Am I understanding that better?
Yes, that's the thought.
All right, so what's more important to us? Having the glass on the, having 20-foot glass on the east side right where they come in? Or having it over on the west side and pushing the building further east so you're, I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, this is a tough one. That's why we suggested sketch plan for such a small, what seems like a simple site plan. But it's, yeah, we have some conflicting codes here.
Okay. I mean, maybe I'm overreacting to this. Remember, Jackson, you go for a little bit.
Well, I was thinking about that too, and then I got distracted by the whole flow. But that is going to be a dangerous pinch point for cars. And I think safety should be our overwhelming value here. And if there's a way to have a feeling of transparency, but privacy for patients, whether it's, you know, tall windows or something, I think I would rather be safe driving in and out, because it is going to be dangerous. And if you've been in surgery and your spouse is driving you home and maybe they're worried about you or something, you're not going to be, that adds to your stress of having to get surgery. And then as far as the signs go, the big sign can be on the street. But if you were in a medical office building, you're not going to have a big sign. You'll have a door with the name of your business on it. And I think if you've identified the building, you come around and you see the door with the name of your business, that would be, I don't think you'd need a variance for that. Would you, Carrie?
Two signs may, because it only has street frontage on the one side.
Even if it's just on the glass of the front door? Does that count as a sign?
Yeah, a window signage, yeah, they could do that.
Yeah, yeah. So just like if you were in a medical office building, you'd identify, you'd arrived at the right office, because it's on the door, but from the street, you could see the sign. So, and it's just an idea. But as far as I'm concerned, if you could have a feeling of transparency by, you know, high windows or something like that on the east side, I'd be willing to get a variance for the amount of transparency to make that drive more safe and put the entrance on the west side and all the parking on the west as well. And then the garbage to the south.
Okay, so we're recommending to the developer that the facade of the building is not along Metro Boulevard. That's what I'm hearing you all say. That the facade is going to be on the west side.
Well, there is no facade on the east side either.
Well, I thought that was the entrance.
There's no entrance on the east side, that I understand. It's on the north side.
Yes, sir, there is.
It's on the what?
Yes, sir, there is, on the east side.
The potential for this bump out would allow for.
We can't see your finger.
Sorry. The potential for this bump out where, Ben was doing that part for him. This right here, the idea would be vestibule here where a door could serve to the north and directly to the east.
So the entrance would be right on the corner?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, okay. And then the 20-foot glass expanse, how far west does that run?
Well, the idea.
You've got the entrance there and you've got the elevated.
Right, the idea is that this portion, this portion of the building would be that raised-up lobby. This would be the lobby, so.
Raised-up corner.
This could be all glass, this could be all glass. This would still have some windows in it, but be transitioning to the lower form, yes.
Member Pierce has another thought.
Yeah, I just, I think a lot of what we're talking about is form and function. And to be honest, I actually don't like having the transparency for medical. But I know that's what's in the comprehensive plan. But I don't think that makes sense to have, for this function, to have that transparency. And for sure, in the operating rooms, it doesn't make any sense to have that much transparency there. And so I, for me, some of the conversation is similar to the requirement for the 20-foot, the 20-feet ceiling. And so for the function is how I would view, does the variance fit that particular function? The only one that is different to me is, remember Agnew's point, single use, right? But this isn't a medical building that's going to have multiple uses. It actually is a single-use medical facility. And so for that, it kind of is what it is. Unless what we're really doing is trying to, which in this case, I feel like this is a little different than Ted Carlson coming in with a plan. This is, this is the doctor's office coming in and saying they need to move offices and here's where they'd like to build a new office. That feels a little different to me than what we typically would get from a developer. So to me, it is, it's understanding the function. And then what variances are, would we allow for that function to be in this location? And that's, to me, is the crux of the challenge for us to revolve around.
When you said we had very little discretion here, what discretion do we have? Keep working on this a little bit.
Yeah, it's really, it's really in terms of those variances. So again, it comes down to that function piece to justify.
You're getting me there. I mean, there are things about the function, as Member Pierce is talking about, that lead me to believe that the comprehensive plan, the guide, not is, you know, not every element of it is critical. But we're trying to do, you know, have it guide us as much as we can. So go ahead, Mr. Whitehouse.
Yes, and again, so, yes, we were trying to ask for as few variances as possible. And I believe the only one we are asking for is the 20-foot height for the entire building. We would be willing to achieve that in an area that would be used for the lobby. It's our understanding that the no parking between the building and the road would not be a, or putting parking there would not be a variance. It's something that you're looking at and would be a future desire, correct?
That's right. The other potential variance is the 75%, because we don't know what the building looks like yet.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And you're right to, that drives, what, for this building use, what would we want to have, 75% windows? Well, that would be the lobby, the entry in the lobby. So you're absolutely right. That's why this building lays itself out. It wants to be sitting this way on the site. I understand the desire to pull buildings up towards the street. But, I mean, if we look at this neighborhood, the other side of the street is a creek or drainage ditch and then a highway. And then two neighbors down to the south, I believe, is it the Public Works Building? And I mean, I'm not sure if that's going anywhere anytime soon. That has parking between it and the road. We, what we're proposing is closer to the street than the office building that's there. We just feel that getting that parking so that a place, especially those ADA stalls, getting those as close to the entry as possible. And the entry does really want to be on that east side.
Okay, I'm getting more comfortable with some of the arguments you're making. I still join Member Risher though in thinking that your argument that people are going to be at danger going across the drive aisle, when you think about everybody that, thousands of people a day that walk across the drive aisle at Target and don't get hurt. I mean, to me, it's I'm not persuaded by your argument on that one. Nonetheless, I start to see a little bit more clearly what your concerns are and why you've suggested that the parking be on the east side with the entrance on the northeast corner of it. And the, go ahead, Member Pierce.
So I, the, for me, and the reason that I talk about function and then form is because I actually internalize this totally different from a hotel or something else. And I don't know if it's right or wrong. So to your point, if I'm going for medical services, I want it to feel more private to me. And so I actually don't want it to feel like I'm walking across the parking lot at a Target or a CBS. I don't even like doing that if I'm going there for a vaccination. But it's just a personal, it's a personal preference that when I am going for this function, I would prefer there to be a parking lot that I can come into. It gives me a sense of privacy. When I go into the building, I think about privacy again, especially from a HIPAA perspective. And I don't want people to see what I'm doing in there. I don't really want them to see that I'm coming in and how I'm coming out. And so that level of privacy is what I think about. So I actually wouldn't want, I wouldn't want it to be the other way. And if we were arguing for that, I'd actually argue for having a private parking lot. As private as it could be.
I probably wasn't very clear. I'm not arguing for that. I'm getting more comfortable with the idea of the parking being on the east, the way they've got it set up. I'm just thinking about overflow parking.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
There might be, there might still be people that, as opposed to parking on the west side of the building and walking all the way around, will pull in and park and walk across the drive aisle.
I got you.
That's just, I guess, just an occasional patient, I think, that would do that. I mean, everybody will try to get in that parking lot, but it's got limited space available. Yeah, Risher.
Could I interject? Just one more thing about why we think putting, crossing the drive aisle would be problematic is just because of the, how close it would be to the public right of way. And so we don't think there's enough stopping distance when, if you were, put the parking, sorry, put the door basically as close to the front as you could. You know, with this lobby design, you'd have to put it, you know, somewhere in this area. And Metro Boulevard does curve around here, so we're worried maybe the building would block, you know, the view of someone walking across here. And there's just not enough distance from the right of way to that first point. Versus where, like a Target, usually that's set in, you know, a couple hundred feet. And so there is, you know, people know they're pulling into a parking lot, okay, let's kind of slow down here. Someone veering in here, you know, we're just concerned about it. We're just trying to keep everybody safe, so.
Yeah, it's just, on my part, I didn't explain myself very well. It's just a casual observation, my part. I think people will park over there and walk across the drive aisle. I think it's just something you're going to have to deal with. But that doesn't mean I'm saying I'm opposed to you having a parking lot on the east side of the building. I'm getting more comfortable with that idea, as you can probably tell. Member Agnew.
I think from a safety perspective, if we have safety concerns, I think that there are things that we could do, like, I don't know, I'm going to look over here, right? But like, do we add a speed bump then, right at that entrance? Or what are there other things that we could do rather than just adding more parking? And then when I think about privacy, it actually feels more public for me to walk from the east side parking ramp that's right on Metro than it would if I were coming in from the other parking and across the drive aisle. So I mean, I think there's so much of this that's open to interpretation. And I think that the reason that, at least from my perspective, that we continue to cycle about some of these things, like the form and the 20-foot ceilings and the glass and all the transparency is because, you know, the guidelines that were put together were anticipating more mixed use and higher-density, you know, designs. And so I think if we go to that root of, what if this were a two-story building and there was more medical or, you know, you could have that privacy upstairs and then it's a, I don't know, making this up like a cafe or something in the bottom. It doesn't have to be a cafe, but just more of that mixed use where then people don't know that you're going for surgery X or Y. And it just, I think, opens up more and doesn't just stick a building in the parking lot. And so I think that's where we're having so much of this dialogue and struggle is because these guidelines weren't anticipating these types of uses necessarily.
Member Risher.
Okay, about the guidelines. That happened back in 2008, the Greater Southdale, or the Southdale Guidelines go into our comprehensive plan. We agree to hire a consultant to 2018. Okay, but I thought in 2000, right, okay, sorry, 2018.
They could have gone back to '08.
It could have. You know, but the thing is, we hire a consultant to be the proponent of the guidelines. We don't address safety, we don't address energy efficiency, we don't address things that are in actual chapters of the comprehensive plan. We become so beholden to these stylistic elements that we completely ignore function. And they become the thing that we grasp onto and just cling to. And it is so ironic that we're sitting in a building that has a parking lot right in front of the entrance. You know, should we move that and make everybody go, you know, buy land so we can put it behind the building? You know, I think safety is not met. I think the needs of the, you know, people who are going to use the building, who, you know, don't want to necessarily have two entryways, one on the east and one on the west. I mean, that's an absurd idea. And I just, it's, it is so incredible to me how these stylistic elements have just totally stymied projects and made people jump through so many hoops. You know, let's think about the bank where they didn't want to have transparency in front of their vault. You know, that was unacceptable that they pushed back on that. And I just, this has got to stop. We need to rein in our guidelines, and we need to start thinking more pragmatically. Sorry, but anyway.
Well, they figured out something that works. We're just trying to get our. Well, they figured out something that works. They're just trying to get our feedback on what we think. And they are, they have been pragmatic, but rolled in some of those elements. And, you know, and I go back to, I probably didn't give you, like, Member Agnew gave you the big picture first, things she likes. There isn't really anything about this concept I don't like. I like the notion that you're making more effective use of that, what otherwise would be a big patch of asphalt that nobody parks on, you know, and all of a sudden now we've got a prospect of a building in there. The fact that it's a single-use, single-story building is not off-putting to me. You know, it's just, I think it's a massive improvement over what's there. And, and so it's just a matter, I think we're trying to tweak it and collectively make it as best, the best building we can make it. And good ideas come from a lot of different places, and so do bad ones. And so we've tried to vet through a lot of these things with you, because we haven't been involved in it week to week, like you guys have, trying to work through all the issues. So there you have it. Anybody else have anything else they want to add? People want to go home?
You, I bet you're regretting the 90 minutes.
Thanks for...
Thank you very much.
It's good, great, your practice is so wonderful, and you want to have your own medical building as well.
Yeah, we'd love to show you renderings so that we can all get a good view of how nice this will look, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, thanks, Dr.
Thank you.
And thanks, the Hempel Group, and everybody else that's involved. Mr. Whitehouse, say greetings to the folks back in your shop. Haven't seen them for a long time. Sheldon and Dean and everybody. Okay, I hope that gives you some help, as we kind of, we kind of mentally meandered around, and thanks for your input, too. All right. See you later. I guess you can go home. Okay, I don't think we need to, we haven't had any commission correspondents come in, I don't think, or the other correspondents that we need to address. And managers' comments.
No comments tonight, other than just celebrating a very productive 2023 for our city.
All right, very good. And let's, let's start with Member Risher. We'll just go right down the line.
I want to say this has been a wonderful experience this year, serving on council, and so I feel grateful for everything. Moving forward for 2024, you know, I just, I hope that as we start screening projects and really thinking about where we're headed, and I've noticed this, with projects that are purely residential, we don't start with what our code requires for residential development. And so I just want to make a pitch, a hope for the new year, that we start grounding those projects in those standards as we move forward. And that's all I have. I just wanted to have a wish for 2024, and that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the chief stepped out. We got to celebrate last Monday on the retirement of our K-9 officer, Blitz, and I lost count of the number of awards that that dog has won. And I was, I was really blown away by that, and I want to congratulate them on their competitions and on their retirement. In preparing for tonight's meeting, I sat and thought about all the strengths that each of the members of City Council bring to our team. And I think, thank you, Member Risher, for starting with a message of thanks, because I'm really thankful for all of you and the talents and thoughtfulness that you bring, and I learn from you every time. So I'm wishing everybody happy holidays and happy new year.
Very good. Member Pierce.
It feels like I have to say something. I just, this, I guess, over the weekend and into today, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank a number of residents who I do think they enter into the process in a way where they seek first to understand. And I, you know what, I didn't realize how much I valued that initially, but I really appreciate that. And so the phone calls I've gotten, or emails, where people were saying, hey, here's what somebody sent me, is this, is this real? Is, what's the story here? And giving you the opportunity to just explain what's going on, I really appreciate that. And that doesn't mean that everybody needs to have the same operating principles, right? But that particular one I do appreciate. And the flip side, those same people, when they are upset about something that we are doing or a position that I take, they do the same thing. And so it just feels like we can engage in a process of mutual understanding and agree to agree or disagree, but then we kind of, to move on. And that is part of the process. And so I definitely appreciate that very much. So for me, that is, that's it.
Good. Thank you. Member Agnew.
I'll build off of what Member Pierce said, and I think it's, I also appreciate those opportunities to have a really constructive dialogue, because there are a lot of situations where that doesn't happen whatsoever, when we get the emails of, how do you sleep at night, and just a lot of vitriol. And I think the last month with the organized trash collection issue, and then this one as well, have just been a heavier end to the year, based off of those who aren't as open to a dialogue or understanding on the onset. And that's unfortunate, but I think what the job is. So here we are.
I think this council, with the issues that we've faced, that Member Agnew just described, plus the two homicides that have also occurred within the last month, I've really been proud of how the council has handled itself as representatives of the people in our town. And I think it goes a long way towards building civic trust. And I think that should be, I guess, I think for this council and others I've served on, that's, it's not just aspirational, it's a real sort of thing that we're trying to do, is build civic trust. And we do it through our actions and more than our words, so they get to observe the kind of decisions that we're making. And you hope that engenders trust regardless of whether they agree with us or not, that their voice was heard and it mattered in the process. So I guess we continue down that pathway in 2024 of continually trying to build civic trust, and I expect that this council will do a good job of that, because it's a real thoughtful group, and I'm proud to be part of it. And, like others, I wish all of you a great holiday. And for those of you in the audience that are, that are watching or will see this later, we wish you the best for the holiday season as well. And we will see you next year. Thank you for being part of our lives in 2023. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, to adjourn the city council meeting of December 19, 2023, the last city council meeting in the calendar year 2023. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We stand adjourned.